Good afternoon and welcome to the Paramount City Council Chambers. This is a special notice pursuant to executive order N-0821 executed by the Governor of California on June 11th, 2021. And as a continued response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the meeting of the City Council scheduled for today, Tuesday, June 22nd at 5:00 PM, will allow members of the public to participate and address the City Council during the open session of the meeting via live stream and/or teleconference only. And with that, I will now turn it over to Mayor Brenda Almost to start the meeting. Mayor Almost?
Thank you, John. Hello, everybody. Hello, staff. Hello, residents that are watching us tonight. I'll go ahead and call to order. Our Paramount City Council meeting for June 22nd. Can I get a roll call of council members, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Aguayo?
Here.
Councilmember Guillen? Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Quayra Stallings?
Here.
Mayor Almost?
I am here. Do I need to get a motion to excuse?
I move we excuse Councilmember Guillen from the meeting.
All right, we got a motion by Lemmons, second by Quayra Stallings. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayra Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Almost?
Yes. All right, we'll go ahead and start with our City Council public comment updates.
We have no updates, Mayor, from the previous meeting.
All right. Next, we'll move on to public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have four public comments, three oral and on general public comments. And then we have another oral public comment for item number 7B, which is the budget. So we'll handle the first three during oral public comments. And with that, Andrew Vialponto, our Assistant City Manager, will get the persons on the line. Andrew?
Hello?
Good evening. This is the City of Paramount calling for Alejandro Llanes.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Mr. Llanes. We're calling regarding your request for public comment at this evening's City Council meeting. You're being broadcast live to the council. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good afternoon. Mr. Vialponto, man, I still haven't gotten an answer from you. I know I've been sending you emails in regards to the discrimination that I feel we've been getting from partial recreation. It's been a month now. So I'm going to get an answer from you back soon. In any event, you know, we're still after proving our point that, you know, 18 to 60-year-old men don't get any recreation in this city, and I'd like to know why. There's never been an answer given. Brenda, you made a point last meeting that you went to a meeting that I-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just, again, we want to remind the Speaker not to address individual council members, but to address the council collectively.
Mr. Llanes, are you aware that please be, again, address the council as a whole, not one individual person, please?
Okay, so it was wanted to be regarded because you stated that answer. You replied to a comment that I made, so I was replying to that. But anyway, to the council, a council member last week mentioned that they were invited by me to attend a handball, to actually attend handball meeting with the handball players after 14 years of this council member never, ever going to a handball resident and meeting with any handball resident or player in their time of service as a commissioner. At that meeting, which I had to pull teeth like to convince this council member to go over there and meet with men who were playing at the time, it was Tony Warfield that joined us, accompanying us, walked across the Hollydale Park to meet with these handball players who, at the time I introduced them, didn't even want to stop to what they were doing while they were playing to address this council member that finally built up the courage to go meet with human beings that were playing a game. So my question to the council member, were you offered drugs? Were you offered to join a gang? Were you offered drinking? Were you catcalled? Were any of the things that we were labeled to do, was that something that you experienced while you went out there? Because being that that was the first and only time that you had gone out there to this council member, did any of that negative stuff that you support that's behind handballs, did any of that stuff occur? You know, we don't have any recreation as adults in the City of Paramount. And again, in the budget, it wasn't included, again. So what is it that is offered for young adults that we specifically went after handball recreation? Now, you tore down the handball porch to replace it with food stall porch.
Mr. Llanes, we have 20 seconds left.
Oh, thank you. Not enough time.
Madam Mayor, as we're getting the next speaker online, just so you know, we do have in the budget presentation coming up, an item that will show you how much we do spend on adult recreation, how much is devoted to that.
Great, thank you.
Bueno? Hello, this is the City of Paramount calling for Jose Sepúlveda.
Sí, yo soy Jose Sepúlveda.
Okay, hang on one second while we get a translator, please.
Sí.
It's going to be translated.
Hello? Okay, the translator is here. You may-
Buenas tardes, señor. Yo soy su intérprete. Podía ayudarlo?
And we will give you six minutes to allow you to-
Le vamos a dar seis minutos para que usted llegue a su punto. Continúe, por favor.
Sí. Sí, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Este viene, yo no estoy de acuerdo con lo que están haciendo de dar permiso para que para que vendan cuetes y todo eso que venden ustedes porque están haciendo mucho daño aquí a la ciudad.
Really, they're really doing a lot of damage here in the city, a lot of destruction.
Están, están, ustedes están provocando que toda la pólvora y todo le haga daño a los niños, a los perros.
Provoking a lot of damage and a lot of damage to the kids and to the dogs.
Los animalitos que andan volando, los pájaros y todos los palos que están cayendo con el sonido.
They're really scared with the sound.
Caen al suelo porque les dañan los sentidos de la cabeza.
It hurts their senses and their brains.
No permitan que vendan esas cosas, esos cuetes.
This, you know, this-
Que están dañando la ciudad con la pólvora y el humo.
Fireworks are really damaging the city with the smoke. Continúe.
Si me entienden, sí, nosotros estamos de acuerdo. Nosotros, yo vivo aquí, mi parvo.
Do we agree with this?
No, nosotros estamos de acuerdo que están vendiendo eso.
We don't agree where people be selling these things. Continúe, señor.
Eso es todo lo que quería hablar con ustedes, muchas gracias.
That's all. Thank you. Es todo, señor?
Sí, gracias.
Thank you. Muchas gracias, señor. Que tenga buena idea. Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening. This is the City of Paramount calling for Jose DeLeon.
Uh, yes, this is Jose DeLeon.
Mr. DeLeon, we're calling regarding your request for public comment at this evening's City Council meeting. Your three minutes will begin now.
Okay. Good afternoon to everybody. This is Jose DeLeon. I want to talk about pollution, and I'm glad that the resident is talking about fireworks. I've been asking for some changes about that issue. I don't understand why the city keeps allowing those businesses to sell fireworks. And we have a climate change program, problem. So my question is for all of you, Lemmons, Brenda, Aguayo, Quayra, what kind of plan do you want for your kids, for your grandkids? Just checking the pollution level, it's already 420 ppm, which is particulate per million. The planet can't handle anymore. And Lemmons, you know that you mentioned in one, a couple of years ago, when the monitors, they went so high, you mentioned that, oh, it's related to the fireworks. By allowing fireworks to sell in the city, we have more accidents, more police calls, fire emergency, more accidents in families. Do the city gets a lot of money by allowing that people to sell those things? Because what happens is, if you guys allow to sell fireworks, people are going to buy them illegal. But if we ban them, then we can get whoever is using fireworks, either illegal or legal. But if you are allowing the illegal, they can get away with it. It's something that we have to change. In San Francisco, in the 90s, the city organized a fireworks in Embarcadero. We can do the same thing here in the city. Let's make, let's have a fiesta in the park.
Mr. DeLeon, you have 20 seconds left.
The city has to organize it to avoid those problems. We've got to think about the future, the pollution. We are surrounded by polluters. And you guys still allowing to sell the fireworks? You've got to think a little more progressive. It's not about just warming up a chair in the city council.
Mr. DeLeon, your time is now up.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just so you know, the city does not make any money off of the sale of fireworks. Everything that the clubs and community groups that host the fireworks stand goes into their their own fund that provides for the different variety of resources and services that they provide to the community.
May I just, I just want to comment, having, you know, worked with nonprofit groups and done fireworks stands, there are some groups that collect sales tax, and I would assume that we would get a percentage of sales tax. Probably, it's miniscule, but if they charge sales tax, don't we get sales tax back to the city?
If we, if they do charge it, I'm looking at Karina. Do we, do you know off the top, Karina, how much we get in sales tax?
If they have a resale permit and they, if they have a resale permit and collect sales tax, yes, we will get it.
We would, but it's very negligible.
Because a lot of stands don't even charge it to be competitive, but I just wanted to state it correctly, that there are some stands that charge, and I'm sure the amount of money the city gets is miniscule, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the decision, but I just wanted to be clear.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Actually, I wanted to add something. I know, Adriana, you were doing some research. There's been ongoing research about illegals versus selling illegals, selling safe and sane. I know, actually, you did like a workshop as well. It was on a Saturday as well, where you invited the residents to come and understand the differences between safe and sane and what's going on with illegals.
Correct. We did hold a fireworks summit, which was on a Saturday. It was during COVID. However, it was recorded and it's still available on our YouTube channel, which explains the differences between safe and sane and illegal fireworks.
I remember you actually had some police officers from other cities that were actually dealing with the same sense where they actually banned illegal fireworks, I mean, banded safe and sane, and we're still having an issue with a lot of illegal fireworks. So maybe we can get that up on social media again, now that it's coming around to 4th of July.
Very good idea.
There's some very good points on there, I think, that were, that were made, that we could probably share with the community. And I know you did it, and it was bilingual as well.
Correct. We did have a representative from the Whittier Police Department. And Whittier is very unique because they actually patrol Santa Fe Springs. And then Whittier, Whittier does not allow any fireworks whatsoever, whether it's safe and sane or not. And then Santa Fe Springs does, so they were able to give us their experience in regards to patrolling both cities.
And that was what?
Not a big difference, none whatsoever. They're still dealing with the high amount of complaints in Santa Fe Springs for illegal fireworks, as well as Whittier. And Long Beach, the City of Long Beach does the same thing. I've reached out to the City of Long Beach as well. Before COVID, I was instructed to hold a town hall meeting, but because of the restrictions, I wasn't able to do so. Therefore, we held the summit on a Saturday that was recorded and was translated.
Who was present at that? I don't, I mean, people, I mean speakers. So if they tune into it, who can they expect to hear from?
We actually had representatives from the fireworks distribution distributor, I believe it was TNT. He actually went into a great detail the difference between safe and sane and illegal fireworks. We had the representative from Whittier PD, as well as the Fire Department, just talking about some of the injuries that they see, the difference between both. Let's see, who else? Oh, we had a representative from a nonprofit regarding what they do with their the profits that they get from the sales of safe and sane. And the Sheriff's Department as well, Lieutenant Camacho, joined us.
And if I, can I ask one final question?
Sure, absolutely.
So I've actually attended a summit like this in the past, and I'm just wondering if the end-all to what you experienced this time was this. What I understood when I did this 20 years ago was that unless it could happen on a regional basis, in other words, like unless Paramount, Southgate, Compton, Lakewood, Bellflower, Long Beach, if we didn't do it regionally, ban fireworks altogether, we're not going to see much of a difference. That's what I, that's what came out 20 years ago. Was there a different sentiment this time?
Correct. And I, and doing my homework when we were preparing for the summit, I reached out to a number of cities and they actually, Long Beach was actually forming a fireworks committee because they're looking to stop the import of fireworks. It's not actually, what they told me, it's not actually coming from Mexico anymore. They anticipate that they're coming from Texas and Arizona. So it's more like stopping them from getting to, from those states into California. So yes, it would be like more of a regional effort and more stopping the transportation of the fireworks.
And I believe we reached out for that reason, correct?
Correct.
That we're interested in a regional effort, and we'd like to know if you're interested too.
Yes.
To all look at this as a region. Paramount is ready to take the lead on that. Is anybody interested? And my understanding was, we really didn't get any takers.
Well, when we were looking at it, Councilmember Lemmons, it was pre-COVID, and there was a little bit of a push to get together as a region, but then COVID hit, and that was put at the, on the back burner.
Okay, good. So it's something that we can address now that we're getting past COVID once again.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we just held a seminar for our organizations. And I believe in 2002, we had 16 organizations that were selling fireworks. Now we're down to eight.
Right, and that's through the attrition that we started quite some time ago. And I know you were present, Mayor Almost, on that Zoom call, correct?
I was, I was.
And that's what you took away from it, too?
I did, and that's why I think it's good that we should put that back on, because there was a lot of good questions that were being answered and responded by the appropriate party.
Right.
So yeah, I think we should maybe put it up again, give the residents an opportunity to hear that again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From good efforts.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
I'd like to mention that the churches and the organizations that sell these fireworks, they do it to help the summer camps, to help our kids and to help our students to be able to afford to go to summer camp. And I know that a couple of churches in particular, that's the reason they sell them. They don't make no profit. It's just to help our kids and our students. Thank you.
All right, we will move on now. Thank you, council members, to consent calendar.
I will move that.
Second, Aguayo.
We have a motion by Lemmons and a second by Aguayo. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayra Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Almost?
Yes. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. We'll start off with a public hearing for resolution number 21016.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item involves the approval of our urban water management plan. The State of California requires larger water purveyors like us to adopt a plan every five years. This proposed plan included in your package tonight, it's a very thick plan, as you can see there. It highlights our water supply, our water demand, and talks about our water conservation activities. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, who will walk us through the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council. See, every five years, we are required to complete an urban water management plan for our water utility. This is, again, required for all urban water suppliers who have more than 3,000 customers. In 2016, the City Council adopted our 2015 urban water management plan. And what we have before you tonight is our updated 2020 plan. These plans are typically prepared and submitted to the state the year following the date of the plan. So the 2015 plan was prepared and submitted in 2016, and likewise, this 2020 plan has been prepared and will be submitted in 2021. Some of the required information for the plan includes water use statistics, the profile of our water facilities, and of course, for us, that would include the addition of the Waterwell 16 facility. It also includes water supply and demand and water conservation activities. The plan essentially looks at data from the year 2015 to the year 2020 in order to project and anticipate the needs beyond that cycle. Over the years, new requirements have been added. One of the most recent changes includes requirements to expand the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which is included in the Urban Water Management Plan, to include six escalation levels of water conservation. These levels range in 10% increments with 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50% projected shortages. These levels range in 10% increments with 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50% projected shortages. And it includes documentation of conservation efforts that would be in place at each of these levels. As indicated previously, one of the main changes of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is the identification of each of these conservation levels and the conservation efforts that would be in place, that would be put in place, should, should a shortage occur. It is important to note that we are still in compliance with these requirements, both at an individual level, as a municipal water utility, and also at the regional level. So the California Water Code requires that these urban water management plans be adopted at a public hearing. So with that, it is recommended that the council read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 21016, adopting the City of Paramount's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And that concludes my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adriana. Okay, before I open up to the public hearing, are there any comments or discussion from councilmembers? Hearing none, okay, well, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Heidi, do we have any testimony in favor?
There is no testimony in favor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anything in opposed?
None in opposition either.
Right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved. No second.
I have a motion by Lemmons, second by Quayle Stallings. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, I'll go ahead and take a motion for the order, please, to read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 21016.
So moved, second.
So I have a moved by Quayle Stallings, second by Lemmons. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to item number five, approval for appropriation of additional pass-through funds for environmental consultant services for the World Energy Conversion Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council approved an original agreement with a consulting firm that we've been using for the consulting work at World Energy, and this was back in 2019 that the council approved this agreement. The agreement requires World Energy to reimburse us for all consulting services, including extra consulting services, which we are at right now. As you know, this is a very, very large and unusual conversion project that we want to make sure is properly and thoroughly evaluated from an environmental standpoint. So with that, I'll turn it over now to Mr. John Carver, our Planning Director, who will walk you through the item. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Sorry. Okay. So this item is a request to authorize additional pass-through funding for the environmental consultant working on the World Energy Project. The consultant is preparing a subsequent environmental impact report, or SEIR, for the conversion project. World Energy, as John mentioned, World Energy is paying for the consultant through a reimbursement agreement with the city. In November of 2019, the City Council approved the agreement at a cost of $243,330. In March of 2020, the agreement increased by $18,560 to analyze water, utilities, and cultural resources as standalone issues. The increase did not require council approval, as it was under $40,000, which is in line with the city's purchasing policy. The increase before the council this evening is for $86,490, and that will bring the total cost of the agreement to a little bit more than $348,000. And again, all costs are paid for by World Energy through a reimbursement agreement. The World Energy Project is an amendment to a CUP that was approved in 2014 and allowed for the production of renewable jet fuel and diesel from beef fat and non-edible vegetable oil. The amendment will allow for the refinery to convert completely to producing renewable fuel. After the project is complete, the refinery will no longer be able to process petroleum products. The conversion project is unique and very complex. This has required unexpected weekly meetings with the city, our environmental consultant, and World Energy, and these have been taking place since January of this year. Weekly meetings on an environmental document are unusual. Weekly meetings have also been occurring between the AQMD, the city, our consultant, and World Energy. The AQMD is reviewing the air quality section of the SEIR, and given the complex nature of the conversion project, weekly meetings have been needed to answer questions and to update information. Weekly meetings with the AQMD on a document rarely are necessary. World Energy has agreed with the increased costs due to the unusual nature of the conversion project. And we're recommending that you authorize additional funding in the amount of $86,490 for the environmental consultant working on the World Energy Conversion Project, subject to an amended reimbursement agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Actually, I am going to start with one question. If you could just explain, there was a couple of questions that came through. What is a pass-through? You can explain that a little bit?
Right, so World Energy has given us substantial deposits. So they gave us a $100,000 deposit upfront. We, we paid the consultant on a monthly basis with that $100,000. When we got down to $25,000, they gave us another $100,000. We continued on until we got down to $25,000 again, then they gave us the remaining portion. So that's how we've been doing it. On a monthly basis, we're billed, and then we get lump sums from World Energy.
And then they pay us back in?
They pay us back completely.
Got it, okay. Thank you, John, for that. All right, is there any other questions from councilmembers? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion by Lemmons and a second by Aguayo. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number six, we have Resolution Number 21021.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Over the last two council meetings, the City Council has heard about the effectiveness of bonds at addressing long-term pension debt. We also give you a full summary of how we currently manage the city's debt, including our pension debt, and you adopted a new debt management policy, as you recall. Bonds are a tool that we've seldom used in the past to manage our debt, so I really want you to have a clear understanding of the bonds and the process that's involved, so. Staff and our team of consultants are now ready to present to you the items necessary to authorize the issuance of bonds to pay off our pension debt. An agreement and numerous authorizations are included with this item to kick off this long bond process, which will likely go until the end of November. So here with us once again is our Lead Consultant, Ms. Suzanne Harrell, and Suzanne will also introduce to you the other members of the team who are participating with her today on this presentation. Suzanne?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's nice to see you again. Again, my name's Suzanne Harrell. I'm the city's financial advisor and part of your finance team. The other members that are on, are participating in the meeting tonight are your Bond Counsel, Brian Quint from Quinton Timig. He's on the top screen. And Jose Vera from Raymond James. He is serving as the city's underwriter on this project. And they'll have a few things to say as we go through the presentation. But I'll just get started and give you an overview of your unfunded actuarial liability. This is the amount of, this is the difference between the pension liability for your existing and retired employees and the amount that you have on deposit with PERS in your account. As of the end of 2019, which is the last date that PERS did their valuation, they do it on an annual basis, the outstanding liability was about $24.6 million. We've projected that forward based on the payments that you made in fiscal year 2019-20, and then the payments that you're making in fiscal 20-21, and as well as what we think additional liabilities might have been generated during fiscal 19-20, and have come up with an estimate at June 30 of 2021 of about $25.4 million. Now, PERS will provide an updated actuarial evaluation as of June 30, 2020, in the coming months, and so we'll have an actual number, so this is just our projected number for June 30, 2020. We'll get a, the actual number from PERS in about six to eight weeks. So as we've talked about in the last couple of meetings, you know, the, the way PERS amortizes your liability and makes you fund up that unfunded amount has been increasing based on their payment formula. And you can see that between this fiscal year and 2030, so just in 10 years, your annual payment is going to go up by a million dollars. So this year, it was $1,009,000. When you get to 2030, it's $3.2 million. It drops off after that, but you can see that that's, that's a big chunk of your budget is going to the increase in the PERS payment every year.
Is that the part that's in, kind of highlighted in green, that's the increase amount?
So the amount, so the, the yellow bars are the actual scheduled payments to make to PERS. The amounts in green, you were fortunate enough to make some additional discretionary payments.
So those are our payments?
Into the, right, so in addition to what PERS required you to pay, you had some one-time funding available to make additional payments in the hopes to reduce your long-term pension costs.
And the, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I get this slide by slide, guys.
Okay.
So from the amounts that are going up each time, the liability that increases and the payments that increase, that's all due to the interest on the original amount?
That's right. So I think maybe if we go to the next slide, you might be able to see, so your, the, you can see that from 2022 to 2032, the payments on an annual basis keep going up, and that's based on the way that PERS amortizes the liabilities at 7% interest. And then there's some liabilities that were created quite a while ago that eventually get kind of fully funded, and you can see, that's why you see the big drop in your annual payment between 2030 and 2031. Some of those old liabilities are now funded, and you're funding, you know, liabilities that were created, you know, 10 years ago or so.
Could you be more specific on that, when you say some of our old liabilities, like amounts that we were short in PERS in certain categories? When you, I, I don't know it's created.
Right, so say 15 years ago, PERS had an investment, so they're, well, I'll, let me try to make it a little bit less complicated. So 10 years ago, PERS needed, okay, sorry, I didn't notice. So say 10 years ago, PERS was required to earn 7.5% rate of return on their investments, and they only earned 5%. So there's, there's a shortage of earnings of 2.5%, and that actually becomes a liability for the city to fund up, because now instead of your, instead of kind of keeping pace with the 7.5% interest that they're earning, they only earned 5%. So that liability gets amortized over a period of time, say 20 years. So after, you know, so now we're kind of at year 10 of amortizing that liability. It's got 10 more years to go. Once that liability is funded, that's why you kind of see this drop. So every year, there's a new either liability created or a credit. So say, sometimes PERS might earn 14% instead of the required 7%. And so that gives you, they, they give you a credit that carries forward against some of your future liabilities. So each year, there's, it's, you know, investment gains and losses, there's changes in demographics, so like mortality rates change, and they change their assumptions, they change their assumptions on cost of living adjustments. So every year, there's something that happens at PERS, and it's a plus or a minus for you. And so each one of those gets amortized over a period of time. And so that's, you just happen to see some, some of your larger liabilities that were created 10 years ago are now fully funded in the next 10 years.
And long, Madam Mayor, do you mind if I just?
No, no, I'm, I'm with you.
So along with that question, what period of time went on where we weren't meeting, I should say, PERS wasn't meeting the investment goals that they had planned on to get us in this position? Was that a five-year period, a 10-year period, a two-year period?
Well, PERS has done some modifications to their required investment returns. You know, 20 years ago, the, the return was eight, the required return was 8.5%. And over time, that's now, as we are today, the required return is only 7%. And so if you look at PERS' kind of average annual, annualized rates of return, so over a 20-year period, they're actually above the 7%. If you're, look at just like the last five years annualized, it's below the 7%. So what they try to do is they try to match that required rate of return, so 7% at this moment, to where they think they can, what earnings rate they can achieve. So you may hear that PERS has, you know, over the next several years, may decide to reduce that required earnings rate to 6 and 3/4 or 6 and 1/2, depending on where they see their long-term investment strategy paying out.
Yeah. Meeting the debt that they have to pay out. Okay, I think I got, got it so far. Thank you.
Okay. So we've talked a little bit about this slide. Again, the, the green line represents the, the information from the June 30, 2019 valuation. The red line represents where we project you will be at the June 30, 2020 valuation. The total payments that PERS has amortized of your $25.5 million liability costs $40.7 million over the next 25 years. So pension obligation bonds, you know, we talked a little bit about them at each of the last two meetings. They're just a debt management tool. So they're, they're just to refinance your, the 7% interest rate that PERS is charging you on the unfunded balance at a lower rate of, at the city's borrowing rate, plus, and we think that's about 2.94% to 3% right now. Pension obligation bonds are issued at taxable rates and are based on the city's credit rating. Jose Vera is going to talk a little bit about that in a future slide. So the idea is that, you know, you've, you saw the, the chart where the, the payments are kind of, they go up, they go down. They're not really, think about if your home mortgage went up and went down like that. It's very difficult to plan. So the idea is that we want to get kind of a level debt service payment, making it more manageable from a budget perspective. So you can see what we would anticipate is the, the gold bars up there, that's the debt service payment. So you can see that we want to refinance this at the lower interest rate, keep the payments level, and then as the PERS payments would have decreased on their own, you know, based on the, the line, we also want to make sure the debt service goes down commensurate with that. So you're never adding more debt service in the later years just to get the, the savings benefit in the early years. So you can see that at, you know, at the, at current interest rates, that the difference between, at the highest point, the, the arrow got a little wacky when it got up on the screen, but at the highest point, the difference between the debt service and the required PERS payment is as much as $1,004,000. Oh, I'm sorry, Karina, can you just go back? And I just did want to point out that the total savings, and really, because at the end, we're just kind of matching the PERS payments at the end. So all the savings are kind of pushed up into the first, say, 12 years, and that's about a little over $9 million of budgetary savings.
Suzanne, you mind if I jump in real quick? Just, this is such an important slide, because I, I want the council to really get a full understanding of this, and you probably do already, but I just want to reemphasize. The, the yellow bars, as Suzanne said, shows a very flat, even payment schedule that we would make if you decide to approve the authorization to go out to the bond market. So that's our bond payment that we're going to make every year on the bond. As opposed to the green bar, that as, you know, Suzanne described, is kind of wacky, it goes in different ways. That's if we do status quo. If we don't go out to, on the bond market, that's what will happen. We will incur that $1.4 million deference in 2023, it looks like, or 2025. And we would have spent an extra $9.17 million on that. So again, flat, nice and smooth, straight, as opposed to the green bar, which is kind of way, way off, so.
What period of time is that?
10 years, is it? Where we have that higher payment until it matches it is about 10 or 12 years?
Right. It got a little squished on the screen, but it is, it's 12 years. It's basically 2034 when the two payments start to match up. The highest payment is in 2030.
So the greatest savings happens over the first 12 years?
Yes, that's right. I think maybe I would go back, I have one more thing. So PERS actually has a program called the Fresh Start Program. And that will allow you to take this $25 million unfunded liability and amortize it straight line, just like the debt here. You've got the, you have the level payments over a 15-year period. That payment would be about $2.7 million a year for 15 years. So you can see if you wanted to use the PERS Fresh Start Program and reduce your overall, you know, payments. So over 15 years, maybe instead of the payments being 40.7 million, they're only 37.7 million. So you save 3 million. However, the payments would be so much higher in the early years than the payments you're even making now. And so it doesn't really cut off the top of the steep part of that curve. And we, so we did look at doing pension obligation bonds compared to a fresh start. And that was not as cost-effective as this. It took longer to realize the savings and the savings in total were not as much. So we did look at that.
One more question or another question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Right now, we're at 25.4 million, right, deficit? Does that grow each year too? Or are we making enough payments to stay current? Plus the makeup that we're doing, like, for instance, when I refi my house, as you used as an analogy, you know, I owed the 200,000 and now they figured in all the financing. And when I pay off 200,000, I'm paid off. Does this work like that? Like when we pay off the 25, however we do it, it's paid off? Or can that change still, the debt change with what's going on with the investments in PERS?
Well, I think maybe the next, is the next?
You think that'll show it?
No, that's not quite the next slide. There we go. So what this does is some of the misconceptions people think are like, well, I issued these pension obligation bonds and my liability is gone forever. Well, this liability is gone, is paid off. Every year, PERS is still going to either earn more than 7% or less than 7%. And they're still going to charge you or create a new liability or a new credit every year for their investment returns. And then again, if they change their, you know, demographic assumptions, if they change their discount rate from 7% to 6.5%. So there will be future liabilities and credits created. But hopefully, they won't be as large or grow to the, you know, to the extent that they are now. And you can see that every, and so we were talking about how those bases get amortized. So every one of those bases will be amortized over a new 20-year period. So the base that gets created in 2022 will start to amortize the, you know, they'll say it's a million dollars. They'll start to amortize that in 2023 over a 20-year, over a future 20-year period.
Was that always the process in the past? It takes me back to my original question, which I'm kind of confused about. To get to the 25 million, did they just hit us with that all at once? Did we have deficits that built up over what period of time? And is there anything preemptive in place now to where you know each year and we don't get back in these kinds of situations?
So this 25 million probably accumulated, I think, going back to, I want to say 2003 or maybe 2008. I actually have a chart, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me tonight, of what each individual base is created from, which I'm sure I can provide to the city manager and he can, he can provide it to you. But every year, there was, you know, mostly about, I would say about half of this 25.5 million is related to investment losses or investment returns less than the required return of 7. Say right now, that's 7%, but there was a time it was 7.5% or 8%. So about half of that 25 is probably related to the lack of rate of return. And the other part of it is related to the change in the discount rate. So PERS is saying you'll have to earn 7% over time. But if they say, you know what, we think we're only going to earn 6%. They kind of hit you with the difference between what your fund balance will earn at 7% over the next 30 years versus what it'll earn at 6% over the next 30 years. And they create that in one liability that they charge you. So if you, if, when, oh, sorry, you know, I lost my voice over the weekend. And I thought it came back, but apparently, the longer I talk, the worse it's getting.
We have a lot more questions.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm going to point to one of those guys up on the screen pretty soon. That's right. And so, so, so there are a few really big numbers that make up the other half of that 25 billion. And one is when they changed the discount rate from 7.5% to 7.38%. Then they changed it again in 2006, 17. It went from 7.38 to 7.25. And then in 2008, 2019, it went from 7.25 to 7%. So there were some pretty large liabilities created, just like in the last five years. And that's related to how PERS changed the discount rate.
Did they give us a notification annually, though, of what we're short?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So when we got to this 25 million, I don't know, John, if this is an answer, a question for the consultant or for you, did we, because I just remember way back when being hit with, look, this is our pension liability, this is how we have to start making it up. I don't remember it being like annual like that. Did we just all at once thought it got too big and had to go there? Or was it always there? And I just remember being hit with a big dollar amount and having to come up with a plan to pay it off.
Well, I have to say that PERS, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, absolutely.
But PERS has actually gotten quite a bit more transparent in what has created this liability. It used to be very difficult to figure out what, what they were adding every year and where, what was creating it. They've actually gotten quite transparent. And so now every year, they give you a calculation about, you know, how much of it is related to the investment return? How much is of it related to demographics? How much is related to what they asked you to pay in for your normal costs and what they actually had to pay out? And so there's a difference there. And so they, they actually give you all the breakdown of those components. And they actually give you a list, year by year by year now, of what those liabilities or credits are.
And that process did not exist prior to, when everybody got hit with these huge numbers?
Well, it was a lot more, like I said.
Comboluted, yeah.
It was, it was all kind of packaged in one number and you couldn't really, you know, drill down into what created it without a lot of, without a lot of work. Sorry.
May I, members of the council, if I may add to it? We do get a valuation report from CalPERS every year. Suzanne was right. Many years ago, like two decades ago, it's one big number. This is what you pay. But I would think at least the last 10 years or more, they actually break it down to tell you what is the unfunded liability. So we were, every year, we get a report and they give you the next year and the following year's contribution rate. So we can budget for it and anticipate the increase or decrease. Because of the Great Recession, the stock market really tanked. And so we knew this was happening. And like Suzanne mentioned, the loss advertised over like 20 years or so. So every year, we're paying into it. And when CalPERS not earning, they expect a 7% discount rate. That's when additional unfunded liability would be created. And, but fortunately, the city has been diligent. Not only we pay the required contribution, we actually make additional discretionary payment to it. Yes, the 25 million seems to be a lot, but we are managing it. And we compare to other agencies, especially those with police and fire, our liability is not nearly as much as other agencies.
Yeah, I totally understand that. I just wanted to know for the future of the city, now there's a plan. We should know each year. You know, we paid our debt and this is what we're short and what we have to plan for. Because it just seems to me, but you kind of said yourself, 10 years ago is when it kind of exploded and hit. Because that's what I remember is just all at once. We have this huge liability and we have to make a plan for it. And that wasn't happening prior to that. So there, it was, I'm understanding it was all built into one number. It basically kind of got separated out and cleared because it ballooned. And probably you guys asked questions and we knew where it came from. And now we're on a plan that we'll know that each year and can plan for it instead of, boom, 25 million. Maybe it's a million and a half each year or something like that, not 25 million.
Right. And also back then, as we realized that we're going to have increasing required contribution by CalPERS, we set aside funds to help smooth the rates. Unfortunately, we haven't been, we didn't need to use it. So money's been saved up, which we are recommending perhaps to do a trust for it and for the future.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Those were good questions.
Very good.
Yeah, maybe let's go back. So as part of the due diligence process to issuing pension obligation bonds, you know, the impact of this rate of return, like we said, you know, if you earn, if PERS earns 7% and the discount rate is 7%, there'll be no liabilities created for the PERS investment rate of return. But there's always a possibility that even like in the early years or that they, they earn less than 7%. This year, apparently, they're going to be earning about 14%. They have a, they have a seminar, I guess in a couple of weeks, to tell us what the earnings are. So this year, there'll be a credit available. But as part of the due diligence process, the city contracted with Bartell and Associates. And they're a very well-known and well-respected firm of actuaries. And they do a lot of actuarial work on your pension already. And so what they do is they have, they run simulations on interest rates. And they run 10,000 simulations, like what happens if the rate is 6% in year one, but 8% in year two, and then 3% in year three. They, you know, there's 10,000 different scenario, investment scenarios they run. And what they do is they compare what you would pay to PERS if you did nothing, status quo, and all these different investment ups and downs occurred versus what you would pay for debt service plus any new basis that might be created because of the investment ups and downs. And so at a 3% rate of, 3% interest rate on the bonds, they concluded that there's an 82% likelihood that issuing pension obligation bonds would not cost you any more than what PERS would charge you over the next, say, 30 years. And so they have, they have this chart. It's really hard to, it's really hard to read from here, but this is their chart. And it kind of shows you the different, you can see in the red part at the, at the left-hand side of the screen, there's a very small percentage of their scenarios that show it costs a little bit more. And again, it's just a small amount more, as opposed to the right-hand side in the green. You can see some of the scenarios create quite a big positive. And most of them create kind of a minimum positive, so. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, has some views on pension obligation bonds. And they have kind of five areas of concern. One is that they're concerned that public agencies are treating pension obligation bonds as an investment vehicle. You're borrowing money at 3% to invest in PERS, hoping to get a 7% rate of return. They feel like pension obligation bonds are, have a complex structure because they're taxable. They think it might impact your debt capacity. They're concerned if POBs have no early prepayment or they extend the maturity. And they think it might be a credit negative from a credit rating perspective on the city's general fund. So, and kind of our response is that the POBs, you're not really using this as an investment. You know, we've checked with Bartell and had them run their scenarios about what can happen on the investment side of this. But this is really a debt management tool that you're using to kind of flatten out your payments and make it, them easier to budget over time. And again, on the other ones, you know, we're using a very traditional structure and it's not complex at all. There used to be complex taxable bond structures 10 years ago. But, you know, the modern pension obligation bond looks just like a tax-exempt bond with a 10-year call provision like you would find in any regular municipal bond. You can see we're not extending the maturity. We're not increasing the payments. You saw how the, the debt service goes down over time as the, as your liability to PERS would have gone down over time. And again, you know, there's, there's, it's kind of like a credit neutral for funding up your, your unfunded liability. Your ratio right now is 73%. You've funded to 100%. That, you know, outside of anything, any other, any other factor, that's really either a credit positive for you or it's at least credit neutral. So we feel like we've addressed the GFOA concerns on pension obligation bonds. So again, we talked about, right now, the balance we're projecting for June 30, 2021 for the unfunded liability is about 25.3. The way you figure, the way PERS figures out how to pay that off is they roll it forward to June 30, 2022. And then they have me roll it back to the estimated payment date. And so we think that the projected estimated prepayment amount at the end of this November is 23.821 million. The pension obligation bonds, again, so to prepay the 23.821 million, there'll be cost of issuance of about 365,000. And then capitalized interest, which is actually borrowing money to make that first interest-only payment during fiscal year 21, 22. Because you're going to prepay your entire fiscal year 21, 22 liability payment in July. You get a 3.5% credit or discount on that. And you've, the city's done that for many years now. And so we don't want you to have to pay your UAL payment for this, for this upcoming fiscal year and a debt service payment for the upcoming fiscal year. So we make sure that by capitalizing this payment, that you don't, we're not double, you're not getting a double whammy, paying, paying PERS and paying the debt service on the bonds. And then the, the people that are involved in, in the issuance process are Bond Counsel, Quinton Timig, Disclosure Counsel, that's Jones Hall. They've acted as your Disclosure Counsel on other issues. Your city attorney is going to be participating in the validation process. I'm your municipal advisor to advise you on the interest rates and the structure. And there's other things that S&amp;P, Standard &amp; Poor's, will charge a rating fee. There'll be some miscellaneous costs for preparation of official statement imprinting and so forth. And then the underwriter who gets paid as a percent of the bonds that are issued. And so the total of those costs is 365. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jose Vera. And he's going to talk a little bit about the city's anticipated credit rating and interest rates. Jose?
Well, thank you very much, Suzanne. Hopefully, you could all hear me well. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. My name is Jose Vera with Raymond James. We're your bond, underwriter. Our job is to identify the investors for your potential pension obligation bond. What you're looking at here in Slide 12 is the tabular form of Slide 5, which I know Suzanne and, and John spent a bit of time explaining the benefit on an annual basis of doing a pension obligation bond. And so behind the numbers that create this debt service schedule for your bond is certain assumptions. CalPERS charges you, for lack of a better word, an interest. CalPERS charges you, for lack of a better word, an interest rate on the unfunded liability. And that unfunded liability is being at an interest rate currently of 7%. My investors would look at your underlying credit rating and assign an interest rate based on your credit worthiness. Based on our educated guess, our experience dealing with many cities over the last 20 years, we expect your city to achieve a credit rating in the AA category. We've assumed a AA-minus credit rating for running these numbers and showing you the results. And I'll tell you a little bit about why we're, what we're basing that on. The city has had a tremendous run, 10 years of surpluses in the general fund. You guys have a 40% general fund reserve balance at the time. 40% of your expenses in a general fund balance, which is terrific. You finished a very difficult year with a surplus this past year. So you've demonstrated tremendous financial fiscal responsibility, great management, as well as the fact that when you've asked your residents at least two times with Measure Y and Measure P, they've overwhelmingly supported the city and your path. So financially, the city is very strong, and the numbers here assume a AA-minus rating and a paying interest rate of below 3%. And so as was mentioned when you were looking at Slide number 5, the reduction in your annual payment will vary over the years. But in the low years, it'll be, in the near-term years, it'll be around $500,000, $600,000 lower, up to a maximum of $1.4 million in reduction in payments in 2030. So overall, the savings are fairly remarkable at $9.1 million. And the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what could happen if interest rates shift. So as I mentioned, investors currently are valuing a AA-minus pension obligation bond at rates below 3%. Currently, that generates, as I mentioned, $9.1 million of savings or 22%, 22.5% over what CalPERS would charge over the same time period. But what happens if rates happen to increase by 25 basis points? Would that have a large or small impact? Well, we ran that. And basically, if rates were to increase by 25 basis points and go up to, let's say, 3.22%, your savings will still be fairly substantial, $8.5 million, but they would decrease by about $620,000 over that 20-year period. So we want to demonstrate this because, one, we're barely getting started in this process. We're likely going to lock in rates sometime in the late fall. And so we know that there could be some interest rate volatility between now and then. And the next slide, I would like to pass it on to Brian Quint, who'll tell you about that, the timing involved from now till the bond closing.
Thank you, Jose. And good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Quint from Quinton Timig, and I am your bond counsel. And very quickly, all pension obligation bonds require a Superior Court validation action because there is no specific authorization in the law. You'd think after all these years of doing pension bonds, the legislature would have handled that. But each and every pension bond that is done, and there have been many done this year and dozens over the years, requires a Superior Court validation process. Basically, we bring an action against any and all persons that are interested, and we go through a process of going into the court. We request a, it's an ex parte obligation proceeding, and we ask the court for a default judgment. I can tell you that in every single one of the ones that I've worked on, which have been a number of them, and I haven't heard anything else from anyone else, automatically this gets a default judgment. The news is good. The news is good for everyone. The idea is to save the city money, and that's good for the city, and it's good news for the residents of the city. The only unfortunate thing is it takes time to get through the courts. And, you know, in COVID time, in post-COVID time, we're a little less sure of the timing. But this timeline gives you an idea of where we go from here. Assuming the council gives us the green light to move ahead, the next step would be for us to start the validation process. And as is indicated here, it's approximately four months between our getting started and actually issuing bonds. But again, this is a common requirement, and we do it in every pension financing.
Next slide. Is there a next slide?
Suzanne, back to you, I think.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
So now, Madam Mayor and Counsel, there, all the experts are here to answer your questions. And we also have a recommendation before you tonight that the city council read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 21021.
Okay, council members. I know Vice Mayor did have a question.
I had a question. Okay, once it gets approved, then we have to wait to lock the rate, the interest rate? Because when you refinance your house, once you sign papers, it locks the rate.
I know. Having to go through the validation process and having to go through the court granting the judgment actually takes quite a bit of time. And so until the court actually enters that default judgment, that's when we can actually lock the rate. And we think that'll be somewhere around the beginning of November so that we can prepay your obligation by the end of November.
But the rate might go up.
But the right, right, yes, the rate might go up between now and then. And the only reason we don't want to lock it now is because we don't know how long that court process will actually take. And so nobody can really lock the rate in and say, well, we're going to issue the bonds in three months, or maybe it's four, or maybe it's five. So we actually have to wait for the court to get through the process first before we can lock the rate.
Okay, thank you.
So Suzanne, I have a question there for you, for John. So the cost is 365,000 to get this done. It states here that we're going to, the cost of the issuance are financed as part of the bond issue. So is the 365,000 part of the 25 mil?
Yeah, so the actual bond issue amount is about 24.5 million. So you can see that it pays for the cost of issuance, it pays for the capitalization, and it pays for that 23.8 payoff amount.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so that's not out of pocket.
One question. Absolutely.
On one of the slides, you had two rates, and I'm, you know, one that we're at, and I'm assuming the other was a potential that you thought we could be at by November. It was like a 2-something and a 3-something.
Yeah, 2.9.
Yeah, $600,000 difference. If we were to approve this tonight, are we approving like a cap at that? Like, let's say it goes beyond the 3.22, you know, would you have to come back?
We do have to come back anyway.
Right. If we go to the timeline, so once the court actually grants the validation, you can see that happens around October 1. We actually will come back to the city council in October because you still have to approve the offering document for the bonds, which includes all the city's finances and everything that Jose needs to present to investors who want to buy the bonds and to the rating agency. And so at that point, say, the mid-October, we would come back and tell you where the interest rate market is at that time. And so there's still an opportunity to decide whether the rates are, you know, have moved too much and you don't want to proceed, or where they are at that moment. So you will see us again.
That's what I was interested in, are we going to have an option depending up on what happens?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any more questions?
If there's nothing else, I'll move the Resolution Number 21021. I second.
All right. We have a motion by Lemmons and a second by Quayle Stallings. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguiayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons. I mean, Olmos.
It's okay. Yes, and thank you, Suzanne, and I love the-
Thank you, and I apologize for my voice.
No, you're fine. Thank you. And the two gentlemen, they went off-screen, so I can't say thank you to them, so.
They know you.
Send them the thank you.
We'll pass it on. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right. We will move on to item number seven, which is budget.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and just a reminder, we do have a public comment, a request for a public comment on this item, so just want to remind you about that. I'm happy to present to you the fiscal year 2022 budget. As I wrote in my budget message to you all, this budget outlines our spending plan that continues to address what we feel is the community needs while positioning us to restore programs and services as we see our post-pandemic world start to take shape here. I also want to emphasize that, as you'll see in a moment, we are utilizing the new funds from Measure Y the way they were intended. We're using them to maintain public safety, to enhance our infrastructure, and to keep our public parks in tip-top shape. We're also able to perform some much-needed deferred maintenance. In fact, at $22 million, the level of funding for our capital improvement projects is one of the highest in recent memory. We're also happy to be reinserting costs that unfortunately were taken out for community events that weren't held because of the pandemic, so we're bringing those back. Now, in regards to personnel, which is our largest asset, we're proposing no full-time positions for this year, but we do have one upgrade of a full-time position, and that's reflected in the budget. We're also recommending a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for all employees. And as part of this, we're recommending a change to our contract with CalPERS to reflect the continuance of the city's pension reform efforts. However, we're asking the city council to take this resolution, which is Resolution Number 21020, off calendar at this time. So as in previous years, we'll open the presentation with an overview of the city's financial outlook for the upcoming fiscal year. Then we'll toss it over to each of the department heads, who will then go through their department's budget in great detail. Then we'll end with a comprehensive presentation of our capital improvement project program that I just mentioned. And at any point, please stop us to ask questions or if you need more clarification or more information. So we have a lot to go over here with that. I'll hand it over to Karina to kick us off. Karina?
Thank you, John.
When do you want to take the item A off?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, we will take item A off calendar. Should we do that now, Mr. City Attorney? Let's do that now? Okay, great.
All right, so we'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to remove item A off the calendar, please.
I moved it second, I think. Quayle Stallings, she's, yeah, I'll second then.
We have a motion by Quayle Stallings and a second by Lemmons. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguiayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos.
Yes, and I know also, John, we have a speaker, and that is for item number 7B. So do you want to hear the speaker now or as we go through the presentation?
It's probably best to go through the presentation.
That's fine.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the council, good evening again. As John mentioned, many of us tonight will rotate and give you a detailed review of the next year's budget. And I'll be happy to start off with our financials. As you know, this past year, we focused a lot of our resources on the pandemic. Our efforts were COVID-19 mitigation-driven, such as mass distribution, food bank, senior programs, public assistance program we do for like rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and even business grants. In addition to that, we were able to replenish some of our reserves that we will go over in detail later on tonight. We also were able to make additional payments to CalPERS for the unfunded liabilities that we just talked about. All these were made possible with the new influx of revenues through Measure Y. Also, we received some federal resources this current year, including CARES Act and CDBGCV money from the federal government. As we look forward, things are looking a lot different than this past year. The blueprint for a safer economy has been lifted this past week. We're expecting the city to operate back to normal operating levels. And a number of deferred maintenance has been programmed this year along with many capital improvement projects. With that said, we are recommending no increase for business license, no increase for animal license or swap meat. Fiscal year 22 is the second year we receive Measure Y. It continues to play a big part this coming year's budget. Truly, Measure Y is our saving grace, especially during this past year with the pandemic. Many of our revenues have dropped because of COVID-19. Also, what is new to fiscal year 22 is the American Rescue Plan Act resources. Now, the city has been allocated $19 million. However, because the final guidance have not been published, and we know that this is federal money, and there are a lot of strengths attached to it, we have yet to confirm what eligible projects can be used. So we will stay tuned and continue to look at the guidelines to see what eligible projects can be used this funding, and we'll come back to you for more detail in the future. This is the city's finances in three different funds. First is the general fund. This is the fund where the council has the most discretion. We're looking at breaking even this coming year. As for restricted funds, as its name stated, they're restricted in terms of use. Only eligible projects can be used with these resources. Lastly, the water fund is posing a $3 million deficit. Based on what we know today, because of the production cost has gone up so much due to a closure of a well, we're anticipating a huge deficit, and that may bring us to a negative fund balance. We'll go through that in a little bit more detail later on tonight. In terms of revenues, general fund is staying consistent with the current year. You may see a slight drop between, the blue bar represents the current year, the red represents what is estimating for next year. The slight drop in the general fund represents the CARES Act, $680,000 some thousand dollars we'll receive this year, but we are not receiving next year. As for restricted funds, we have seen some big increase in there. Fortunately, we were awarded some additional grants for different projects, so you see an increase there. And water fund, we're expecting revenues about the same. This is city revenues in 10 years' history. Red is representing restricted funds, and blue representing general fund. As you can see, there is increase in fiscal year 21 and 22. The increase representing really is the restricted funds we're getting for eligible projects and also Measure Y. This is a history for general fund revenues. The green represent the new transaction tax from Measure Y. Red represent sales tax, and the blue represent the rest of the general fund. You can see that red, the sales tax, is about the same. The blue portion of it is about the same, the increase really related to Measure Y. MVLF is now the second-largest source of income for the general fund. It will exceed $7 million in current year and next year. That's the current estimate. Measure P was passed in fiscal year 2016. We did get a bump initially. It has slowly declined over the year, but it still provides significant income for the city. Once again, Measure P and Measure Y are stable resources to help maintain a level of services for the community. As for expenditures, we're getting out of the status quo mode in current fiscal year. So next year, you'll see that we're budgeting more in terms of general funded items, restricted funds and restricted funds. John mentioned that we have budgeted aggressive capital improvement projects. You will see it later on tonight. In fact, in general fund, $2.5 million of the capital improvement projects is funded by general fund in the next fiscal year. So this chart shows you the budget for our operations as well as capital projects. With the help of Measure Y and restricted resources, you see a huge increase in expenditures in current year and next fiscal year, fiscal year 22. Once again, $2.5 million in capital improvement projects is funded by the general fund.
I'm sorry, Karina, can you go back one slide? This is what I mentioned in my introductory comments to the council. The red bar is, as Karina mentioned, the capital improvement projects. And as you can see there, 22 million is pretty unprecedented. So this is something that is long overdue, I felt. That's why we went up so high. And we do have the funding to do that. We have deferred maintenance on many of our facilities, our parks. So we're bringing all that back in, and we're trying to make up for the smaller capital improvement project years that you see there.
Here is chart for our operating departments. You can see the public safety continues to be the focus, followed by public- to be the focus, followed by public works. Switching to some fiscal improvements here, we're proposing 20, close to $22 million in capital improvement projects. Adriana Figueroa and David Johnson will provide you with more detail later on. With that, we'll pause the financial review, and David Johnson will discuss community promotion and community services.
Thank you, Karina, Mayor and council members. We were going to go over our community promotion budget. It has a total budget of $455,100, and it starts on page 35 of your budget document. So that total budget compared to, in FY22 compared to FY21, there's about a 9,000 increase, which is actually very good, given the fact that, again, we had savings from events that did not occur. And then this year, obviously, in FY22, we're putting everything back. So we have all the existing programs and special events that typically occur in this budget. We do have, or have added, some new special events. We're retaining, obviously, the, the, all the recognition programs that the council has authorized, and we retain funding for our community groups. So within this budget, there's, oh, there are other things, there are a variety of things, but you, this is where you see the funding for our monthly around-town publication, which goes to all our residents. We have our Pitchin' Paramount events here, Unique Community, and our social media marketing is, resides in here as well. There are some new marketing efforts. We, we have actually a very substantial social media presence. It continues to grow, and we continue to push that. You will see at various, at all our events, we'll have a QR code that will be very visible, that people can scan, and that will automatically take them to our social media. We still need to grow that aspect of our marketing. But for new marketing, we did add to the budget their new items. We will do a mail, we'll mail a postcard to every home in Paramount, which details out the recreation, fall/winter activities, and spring/summer. So we'll still use the old-school method. We'll direct it directly to their households, so they can see it, touch it, but we'll still keep pushing our social media marketing. They did, it's, where it's not new marketing, cityscape, it is new in the sense that it'll be now in a digital format. This budget also now has a full funding for our Youth Sports Scholarship, Every Child Plays program, and it's of a full $30,000. So all the events that we traditionally have done, and unfortunately, we're struggling with during COVID and could not hold, they're all back. There is one little variance here. It's our Heritage Festival. Because our Heritage Festival is typically held in June, as soon as the kids got out of school. Because we took the effort, or we estimated that we wouldn't be COVID-free in June, we, we moved it to August. So it's currently budgeted twice in this fiscal year, which is an oddity. So we have an event scheduled for August, and then we have the one traditionally be held in June, so they both fall in this fiscal year. If the event goes well in August, and we see that that's actually a good date to operate that event, we could consider then moving that to August in FY23. The new events that we have in this budget, we have a brand-new back-to-school event. It will be heavily financed by donors. We have Supervisor Janice Hans committed a substantial amount of money to support this program, as well as smoke and fire in our own community. This event is to identify up to 500 needy students in the city of Paramount that go to our schools, and provide them an event where they feel special. They're going to get a backpack full of school supplies that they can take to school, the new school year. They're going to get a brand-new pair of shoes. They're going to get brand-new sweatshirts, because as soon as you go back to school, I know it's hot, but eventually it'll get cold in the fall. And we want them to feel special, but it's not, it's more than that. At this event, we're going to feed them and their families. We're going to have activities for them. We're going to show them all the activities that you can engage with, with the city of Paramount, and our YMCA partners, and, and make sure they're, they understand that with those YMCA programs, there is funding available to help them pay for those activities. So this is going to be a fun event for these kids and their families. You recently approved the coffee with the mayor, so that's going to start in July. And then we're going to try an event on that Small Business Saturday this year, where we, we'll do an event, we try to draw people into our downtown and encourage shopping in our local business district. Again, for the recognition programs, we retained the Youth Sports Hall of Fame. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it last year. If you've been to the Horchata Ria, that is where our Hall of Fame sign is posted, and hopefully this year, we'll be able to run that Hall of Fame event, and it'll include a dinner for the, the athletes, but we'll do a new posting at the Horchata Ria of the new athletes of the year. In education, it's the ones you're all familiar with, and then we continue to do signage for our active military. So this is our youth league budget, the portion dealing just with the youth leagues. Again, very odd times, so we did, because we had some closures, we had COVID shutdowns, we did move a lot of funding into this last fiscal year, 2021. So there's about $45,000 there. 15 was set aside for the scholarship program. And so in FY21, this is their last year of direct subsidy. All the funds then move over to our sports scholarship program. So people in our community who cannot afford these league fees can come to us. We can assess their, their need, and they'll get a discount, and which then that money flows back to the independent youth leagues. So of that 45,000 was, that was available in FY21. 15 has been set aside for league capital purchases. They do have equipment needs that have not been met for a few years. Another 15 was set aside for their, the last part of their direct subsidy. So we anticipate that being approved by the Parks and Rec Commission in June. And then the $15,000 that was left over, we did get authority from the council to purchase additional league capital items, and we're in the process of doing that. All the community organizations that are typically funded under this division are currently funded this year for FY22. There are no new groups. In terms of our special event groups, the 999 Kids Foundation continues to get funding. Latina Arts is still funded for their student art show. To Peak is funded for their two events, Day of the Child, Day of the Dead. And though they haven't done it in the last few years, Friends of the Library is still funded this year in the, in the hopes that they're able to restart their open house program for the library. These are your community organizations. This is the section of the budget that deals with that. You'll see the oddity in FY21 where they all bumped up to, you know, additional $5,000. They all got that as assistance from the city, because they're all, also were struggling with COVID, and they were, had costs and expenses related to that as well, so we assisted them. And then it goes back to their traditional amount in FY22. In terms of other items in this budget, there's a variety of supplies and events. You'll see that, again, the city publications bumps up to $110,000. Again, that includes $10,000 for those new recreation marketing materials. And then we have an expansion of the Pitchin' Paramount program, and our community promotion events obviously grows back up to what would be a normal level. FY20, again, is odd, because, again, you had a lot of savings from events that didn't occur in the last half of that year. And then this year, obviously, they're all back, and obviously, all savings are gone. So that would, that, again, that $176,000 is all those major events that we run for the city. And with that, happy to answer any questions about the community promotion budget.
Go ahead. One, maybe two questions. The Heritage Fair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not quite understanding why you're saying it's appearing in the budget twice. I understand that it was scheduled for June. You're moving it till August. But why would it still be in the budget twice?
So our, our budget appears from July to June. So August appears in FY22, and then June 2022 also is in the FY22 budget. So it does appear twice.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So that's basically for next June, so?
Correct.
In case we have to have it there. So you're doing it in August, but the June one, you may move it back to if the August doesn't work out better, so you have to plan for both.
Correct, and then that would be a savings to the budget.
Okay, get it. And then you talked about the sports scholarship programs, correct? So I had some questions come to me via some social media posts about funding being cut from various sports programs. I'm not aware of anybody being cut in funding, just a difference in the process. Am I erroring in that, or is that?
No, you're not. You have it exactly correct. So, again, the direct subsidy goes away. They're absolutely correct in that. But the funding was shifted all to the scholarship program. So those funds, as many people they can get to us who couldn't otherwise afford that program, they get subsidized by the city. That money then flows back into those leagues. It is by a different method.
Yeah, and, and my understanding, too, is always the idea of the city subsidizing that was so that every child could play who wanted to play.
That's correct.
And we used to turn that over in a bulk amount, and instead of doing that to make sure that every child who wanted to play could play, now all they do is turn in the name and say, this child wants to play, and then that scholarship money goes to them. So it's a difference in the process, not a difference in the funding amount, or leaving any child out.
Correct. It actually incentivizes them to identify children and families that otherwise could not afford this, or who would have struggled making their normal payment to those leagues. It incentivizes them to find those players, those families, and send them over to us, and we can assist them.
Which is what we wanted to do, is use the, the taxpayers' money to see that every child could participate. And as you said, this incentivizes them. But no dollars were removed from any organization, or we didn't take any money away. We just said, the money's always been there, and whatever it is that we're allotting per team, just show us that you have that many children who are interested in playing, and we'll fund them. And I know that in the past, even if they exceed that, then we have funds set aside to make sure that every child who wants to play can play.
You are absolutely correct.
So when I am told the city has cut funding to youth sports programs, that is incorrect information. We simply change the procedure by which the teams can get the money, so that more children can play.
You are absolutely correct.
Thank you.
But I do want to make one comment. Can we go back to the slide where the allocations are at? Because it used to be 15, 15, and 15, correct, for each sport?
No. They used to, in a normal year, pre-COVID, before all these changes, they were eligible up to a maximum of $10,000. So there are three groups. That's where we get the $30,000.
Got it, thank you. I think that's where, there was some confusion, because they were adding up the $15,000 for the three leagues. Can you go back to that, that slide that showed the leagues, please? That had there. So you have PJAA, the soccer organization, softball, but then football's not on here yet, because of course, they are new to the program.
Correct. When football came to us two years ago, we knew we were headed down this path, so we did an offer, knowing that we were hit, we're going to this point. And actually, West Coast Rebels has been very good about, they have sent us about five, six, seven, eight families for this scholarship support. So they're taking full advantage of it.
That clears it up for me, Dave. Thank you. I was just a little confused about the 15, but you're right, it's 10. Great, okay. Yes, Quer Stallings?
David, how often do you maintain, keep up the maintenance with the train, with the Santa train?
That's actually Public Works that does that, and they, they do that every year.
We do. Madam Vice Mayor, we do make modifications to the train based on, on the need. You know, it could be upholstery that we, that needs to take place, or lighting that has to get changed, anywhere from, you know, any items like that. But it's maintenance.
But you bring it out, like, maybe in three months, and see what it needs, or you wait until right before we have the Santa train?
Oh, no, we bring it out. I'm looking at Sarah. We bring it out like in August or September.
Actually, I mean, actually, they make those assessments when we finish last year's train. They're already making assessments of what did this year.
That's correct. We're already looking at it, and what's going to be needing to change, you know? Yeah, and we, you're absolutely right.
I've seen train upgrades. That's why I was like, oh, only $5,000, $4,000.
Well, I mean, actually, they've been really good. So they, they've been doing little pieces every year for the last, I don't know, four years or so.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I took it out of sequence. I thought it was him, not you.
Okay, no, it's fine. It's, it's a team effort. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, so if everyone's okay, we can move on to community services?
Yep.
So our community services department budget is $5.4 million, and this budget starts on page 93 of your budget document. So of that amount, we do have two substantial grants that actually support some of our operations. The ACES, which is our after-school education and safety grant, that funds our STAR after-school program. That's a little over $2 million. And in the city's, or the recreation department budget, sorry, community services budget, there are propositioned transit grants, which supports our transit programs. Our budget increase this year from last year is $226,700. This consists primarily of three things. We did have a, a frozen clerical position from prior years, which is being unfrozen this year. So we have a full year of a clerical position. We did unfreeze a recreation specialist position last year, though it, so we'll see the full cost of that position in FY22. And then obviously, we're reactivating and adding additional recreation programs, events in this year's budget. So obviously, we continue all the programming that you're aware of. It's the existing program that we've done for years. We do have some expanded programming, which consists primarily of adaptive recreation and sports and fitness opportunities. It retains all the, now, there's a ton of special events in community promotion. There's also events that reside in, directly in the community services budget, which is the ones that you see there. But we did add in some special items here, a special, or changes to our events, because we do want to welcome the community back. It was a rough year. If, if you were at the Halloween drive-thru or the Breakfast with Santa drive-thru, it was a little bit heartbreaking, certainly for our community services staff, because we couldn't do it the way we'd had wanted. And you saw, I mean, the kids came through, they enjoyed it, but it just wasn't what we knew it to be. So we did add an event to the Halloween carnival, so it'll occur the week prior to the Halloween carnival. It's going to be a family event. If you recall from the 60th anniversary, when we did the sock hop in the gym, it's going to be very similar for that. We're going to go as Disneyland as we can, and have families come in and enjoy that kind of Halloween activity. That's very separate from what you see on the park on Halloween night. So that's going to be a welcome-back event, just to, we know they had a rough year. The Breakfast with Santa event, so we have sled runs every year. We added those probably about 10-plus years ago. When you went through the Breakfast with Santa event, if you recall, they had that, we had that big light structure that you drove through. We intend to rebuild that over the sled runs, and do something entirely different that we haven't done before, is once we're done, we typically, we're done around 12, and then everyone goes home. They had their breakfast, they did their fun in the snow. But we're going to bring the snowman back, and he's going to refresh the snow and the sled runs, and we're going to turn those lights on, and we're going to run those sled runs for the kids at night. So they get to, they get to go sledding at night, which is something they haven't done before. So again, that's another welcome-back feature we've added. So our community services department, obviously, we consist of all the supervision and staffing necessary to run these programs and events. But we do have partners that we work with. We are working with an agency to run our Friday night market events, as well as the weekly farmer's market. We work with our partner with the YMCA, our independent youth leagues. We work, obviously, with Long Beach Transit and our taxi company for transit programs. And then we obviously work with all the city nonprofits and community groups to run the events that they do with the city. We do run a substantial summer program. We do have swim and rec swim and swim lessons through the YMCA at our Paramount Pool. In addition to, we operate the splash pad, which is, I actually had a phone call today, and he was asking how much it costs to get into the splash pad, and I told him it was free, and he was kind of like, really? So the splash pad is a wonderful opportunity in our community. It's absolutely free, and we want kids to come on out. We are operating our Healthy Eating for Youth hay program, as well as our summer after-school care program. And that is in partnership with the Paramount Unified School District. They provide the funding for our staff to run those events, or those activities. We have our open gym and footsole courts open fully. So our open gym is actually fun, because if you want to go play basketball, you have that opportunity to do so on, on a gym court. You can run full length. We'll run some days for volleyball. And actually, we're introducing, it's been really popular in other cities. It hasn't been introduced here. Have you ever heard of pickleball? So it's, it's a, it's kind of like a, I don't know what it is. It's very interesting, but it's really popular in Norwalk and Lakewood. So we're going to try that and see if, we actually, we ran it, we ran it in our STAR after-school program, and the kids had never seen it before, but they really took to it. They thought it was fun. So we're going to try that during open gym as well. We have our traditional day camp, which is, again, very unique for our community, for, compared to other cities. We run a full day. We, a lot of cities end their program at 3:00. We take it at 6:00, because we know we have a working community. We have movie nights at the community center, and obviously, you mentioned the splash pad, and then we do have special events during the summer. So in terms of sports programming, we do obviously offer programming for our youth that consists of, let me get to my page here, that consists of YMCA offering a basketball program. They intend to offer a footsole program on our footsole courts. Our independent youth leagues offer the programs that you're all aware of. We are looking to bring in actually a, a outside agency to run an instructional basketball league. So this would run year-round in our gym during those periods in which the gym is available. But there's, we're looking at this new basketball opportunity for our kids. And then there's ongoing instructional swim program at Paramount Pool. For teens and adults, we are, in our budget, we are offering another shot at slow-pitch softball For teens and adults, we are, in our budget, we are offering another shot at a slow pitch softball program. We would run an adult footsall league. We're also working with an outside group who contacted us prior to COVID and then COVID shut everything down. But he runs a beach soccer program. So what we would look at doing is working, trying to form a team here or teams. We obviously don't have a beach here, but we do have a sand court over at Salud Park. So we would take down the net. At least that would give them a place to practice in a very small space on sand. And then this gentleman would help us program them into that beach soccer league. So we're trying to get that launched and trying to work with an outside group to get that going. We obviously, obviously offer open gym and we have parks available to our teens and adults. We're also introducing this year Paramount High-Intensity Training FIT. So what we're planning to do is bring out a staff member at various parks on Saturdays. We would post that schedule so you know where that individual's moving around. But at those parks, he's going to offer some high-intensity aerobic activity for anyone who wants to join us. And then we're bringing back again the Paramount Cup, which is a series of sports activities for adults. So unlike youth and seniors, adults are generally able to find their own recreation opportunities. Adult recreation consists of the city creating some directed adult sports programming of the types of programs that you see listed here, which includes open gym, softball, footsall, FIT, Paramount Cup, beach soccer, of that nature. But it also consists of providing the infrastructure on our parks to serve that adult community and the indirect support necessary to maintain those, that infrastructure. So directly that we, when it's said that we don't have any adult sports in our budget, that's wrong. We do have some directed adult sports programming. And it's not just the programming itself, it's the people that have to, that build this and run it. So 20% or 30% of our sports budget has, the part-time pay is directed towards adult sports. That's $19,000. 25% of our supply budget is $3,000. That goes directly to youth, adult sports, I'm sorry. And then obviously, we have to, we administer these programs. We develop them. We oversee them. We make sure they're running right. That's my full-time supervision staff and my clerical staff. That's about $26,000. That's based on a approximate 5% cost. So those programs, we hope to see are successful. Again, they're not successful unless people come out and join them. But indirectly, we do have to support all these adult recreation programs. Our park supervision staff does go out to sites, turn on lights, open and close bathrooms, shut down facilities. The YMCA swim, a subsidy that we provide to support those programs, is part of our indirect support. And our parks and fields, which is a huge part of adult recreation. This is where we provide space for them to engage in activities that adults are able to arrange themselves. We provide costs for pool maintenance. We have provided costs for utilities. These are all indirect costs to support adult recreation. But a big part of this also is just the infrastructure itself. We provide park amenities, typical park amenities that you see throughout every city. Are we able to offer every possible sports amenity on our parks? No. It's not possible. We're a very small city. We have small parks. It's not doable. But we provide the very basic things that every community provides on their parks so adults can provide for themselves exercise and fitness opportunities. We provided, we built Salud Park. This is a park dedicated to adult fitness. It was $4.5 million that we received from the state to build this park. So it's a wonderful opportunity in our city that has walking tracks, fitness equipments, volleyball court, rubberized exercise surface, has turf spaces to engage in soccer or just throwing a ball around. We have fitness equipments at almost every park, every major park. We have basketball courts in almost every major park. We built the footsall courts at Paramount Park. We built the mini-pitch at Dills. These are all opportunities, not just for teens, but it's also for adults. And then again, ball fields. Public Works spends a lot of money maintaining our ball fields, these open spaces. These are places that our community can come out and use. Most of our parks have walking tracks. They may not be rubberized, but we have DG tracks throughout a lot of our spaces or concrete tracks. And then we have this pool, this amenity that we open up for the summer that's available to adults for swim lessons and for lap swim. So there's a lot of stuff there that we offer, do offer a lot. In terms of other programming, obviously, I already mentioned the FIT program. Our, we have facilities available for events. We provide mommy-and-me instructions for our youngest residents. We are offering now adult adaptive recreation for our special needs community. So that's new to our budget and we're excited by that. And then our PEP Learning Center will continue to operate to assist our students with their homework help needs. The community services programming continues. We have STAR after-school, which we said again is funded by a state grant. We offer senior programs. We are hoping that our senior program can, again, begin to grow back again because I know the seniors want to come back. We're estimating that September, October is when the seniors can return for the nutrition side of the program onsite. We have our youth commission to grow young leaders in our community. We have instructional class opportunities through agencies that want to come to our city and offer those classes. And then Paramount Emotion is our ongoing transit program. In terms of some of the capital outlay items in our budget, we have some park upgrades of about $50,400. And as John mentioned, again, Measure Y has now given us the opportunity to deal with some deferred maintenance issues and some, just some fun items that we have postponed. We continue replacing our concrete picnic tables and trashcans. We do have throughout our parks, we have, you know, of all our park facilities, there's a lot of trashcans and picnic tables that are the old metal vinyl type tables. Those are being slowly removed. So you'll see this item recur every year as we slowly replace all the tables citywide with a concrete version. They last a lot longer and they look really good. We have extensive amount of fitness equipment throughout our parks. Those require, and you'll see this every year as well, that we have to replace pieces that have aged out. We are renovating the LED lights at the Parkers Park Ash Tree, everyone's favorite place to have a picnic. If you've seen the tree out here in front of, on Civic Center, when you drive in, see how bright those lights are? The lights at, the ash tree at Parkers Park are probably 12 years old and plus, they're not LED lights. So this will replace those lights. It will look more like the tree that you see here at Civic Center. We want to liven up our parks during the holidays. So we have some park holiday banners that we'll do at Paramount Park and Parkers Park. We do have some, just a maintenance item to replace the countertop at the recreation office. And then we are looking, as you see on the far right, some concrete park game boards that we can put at Paramount Park to add another just basic amenities. Kids can play cornhole with the little bags you toss. In terms of facility upgrades, we have $39,200 there. We have a brand-new TV for our seniors center, a big 80-inch TV for the seniors to watch their novellas during the day. Replacement computers for the PEP Learning Center. We do have a grant that we have out through Congresswoman Royball Allard. Where if we get that grant, that's a substantial grant to actually do a lot of renovations in that building and also replace the computers. If, so we have this money in here just in case that grant does not come through. The idea here is to replace all our old desktops with Chromebooks that the kids would be issued once they come onsite, if they don't have one or they forgot theirs. So we anticipate that happening hopefully soon. We're replacing countertops at the Mariposa Building and an ice machine at Clearwater. And at that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'll hand it over to our public safety director, Adriana Lopez, if you don't have any questions.
Do you guys have any questions? I have one.
I have one. You go first.
Okay, I'll go first. So a couple, I actually have two comments. For open gym, I know that's always been like a budget or you've always explained open gym. But have you, I haven't seen what you market as open gym. Is it two-on-two at, inside the gym? Like, what's open gym?
Okay, so Paramount Gym, you can play basketball. It would be full-court basketball. So if 10 guys show up and they want to run full-court, they get it for, you know, half hour to an hour, whatever the timeframe is. It depends if anybody's waiting for it. If there's just two guys or two girls that just want to come in and shoot and there's nobody running full-court, you can just shoot around. So there'll be days designated for basketball, then there'll be days designated for volleyball. So you, we can set up for two volleyball courts so people can come on and try their handed volleyball.
Okay. So that's great because I think there were some adults that like didn't want to play out in the sun, that wanted to play in a gym. And I was like, oh, we have open gym. So if we could do something to how, maybe promote that a little bit more about the open gym, I think that'd be great, Dave. Thank you.
We will do that. And then we have an item here. We're getting more air conditioning at that gym. So it'll be nice and cool.
It'll be nice and cool. So the second thing, sorry, was, so we are allocating staff to be at the handball courts. And I did not list, see listed on there that handball courts was part of?
We did not put it in the budget because what, we started that pilot program.
Correct.
We have zero requests for that service.
Okay.
So again, a pilot program would end in three months. It'll end probably around the end of this month. There was no need to identify it in FY22 because there seems to be no need to run it.
Okay, but is there an option if a resident calls and says they want to play and they, what are we going to do?
Well, if we ever get a call, we can, if we ever get a call in FY22, we will accommodate it.
Got it. Thank you for that. Okay.
Actually, this probably isn't directed at you, Dave, but it's in your presentation, so I wanted to hit it now. Do we have a status on the grant from the congressman's office?
It's with the federal budget process and I believe the federal budget adopt, they adopt, excuse me, the federal government adopts our budget October 1st. So as the way we know it, it's still in there. It's still in Congresswoman Royball Allard's request. That's what we were told the last time we spoke with her office. So we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping it'll happen.
So we won't hear anything till at least October?
Uh, yes. Officially, for sure. But as it rolls through the process, they'll keep us updated. It goes through a bunch of different committees, budget committees in late summer, early fall. So once it gets through certain, you know, milestone budget committees will know that it looks hopeful.
And then you said that you'd be running the Paramount Cup program and what that encompasses. What does that encompass?
So there are a series of, like, we'll do flag football for adults. We'll do a footsall tournament for adults. So it's like a, you get X number of teams that sign up to want to play and we set up a tournament for them to play and eventually award a champion.
So football and footsall?
We did dodgeball and actually, that was really popular. We did that in the gym. We did a adult footsall on our footsall courts at Paramount Park. We did use Paramount High School West Field for flag football. And there might be another one, I'm drawing a blank, but it's, we'll find sports of that nature.
How do you determine which sports are going to be played? Like, do you say, okay, we're going to be doing football? So then you open it up for football sign-ups? Or do people come to you and say, we want to play football? So you organize it. How does it work?
We publish which sports we think will work and then we let teams sign up.
And how successful was that? How long has it been going on and how successful is it?
We did it, I want to say, two, two-plus years ago. Initially, it was successful. We had a nice group of people who come out and play dodgeball. We had, I know we had about 100 players for flag football, a similar number for footsall. And then the second year, for some reason, it died off.
That wasn't a COVID year? No? Yes?
Uh, no, it was prior to the COVID year. So we're a little disappointed in that. And again, it could be due to marketing. We are hoping to fix that with flyers that will go directly to people's homes. And hopefully, we can see that improve.
Do you have a roster of the people who played the first time it was successful?
I would hope that we do. I'm sure we kept those files, yes.
I was just wondering if it would be advantageous to send out an email survey to ask them, you participated the first time, when it came around the second time, why didn't you participate? What would encourage you to participate? Because, you know, maybe something was done wrong the first time that made them lose interest. Or no, I, like you said, marketing, no, I just didn't know what happened the second year or whatever. I mean, if we have a roster already, would that be difficult to put together to find out?
It should because I know the second year, obviously, we were marketing directly to the people who had played previously.
Yeah.
So I know we have it somewhere.
So good, then maybe we should ask them the question because if it was really a good turnout and people don't come back, there's usually a reason why. It would be nice to know that. Yes?
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Okay, my turn. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Our budget, public safety budget starts on page 79 of your budget document. Public Safety continues to be the largest operating department with a total of slightly under $14 million. It does include five divisions and I will be highlighting each division individually. Here we go. The first division that I'll be highlighting is Administration. And the city's emergency efforts falls under this division. As you can see here, we're proposing to update our local hazard mitigation plan. This is something that every city is required to update on a five-year basis. It was due to be updated last year. However, because of COVID, we had to postpone that because we are required to hold community meetings and make sure that we allow our community members to have input. We did apply for a grant and we receive, we will be receiving $37,000 for the total cost of 46. In addition, we do have some grant funding available in this division. Steve Camparelis serves as our homeless liaison and he's working with Family Promise of South Bay with the implementation of identifying families. We're working with 15 families that have been identified by the school district. And Family Promise is providing certain services that are needed in our community. One being immediate shelter, that could be motel vouchers or rental assistance, case management, as well as finding transitional housing and permanent housing, which is the ultimate goal. And we have approximately $76,000 set aside for that that is grant-funded. That's through the CDBG CB funding. Here we go. So our sworn division, this is our largest division within the department. And as you can tell, we do have a very comprehensive contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. This year, they're proposing a 1.45 increase in both the sheriff's services, which is patrol services. Then in addition to that, we would be also seeing an increase of 1.45 to our special assignment officers. And I'll break down a little bit more in the future slide. And this year, well, actually, this started three years ago, we have two different increases. For the sergeant services, it's slightly under 2%. And once again, our contribution to the liability trust fund is at 11%. This is the second year we have not seen an increase. So discussing our contract with the sheriff's department a little bit more. As you can see here, we continue to have 10 56-hour cars and two 40-hour cars. We continue to have five special assignment deputies, four being beat deputies and one park deputy. And because of Measure Y, we are proposing to add something different. And that would be our youth activities league. And this would be a dedicated deputy who would be, we're proposing the site of Spanny Park. And he would be assigned there. And the goal there is to make sure that he improves our relationship with our community, mostly the youth. This is a program that would provide homework assistance. They would provide organized sports. And also organized excursions where they would go camping. This is a new program to Paramount, however, it has been existence in the city of Hawaiian Gardens. And you might recognize the deputy that's sitting over by the lieutenant. That would be Deputy Fadeda. He is, he has been the deputy who has been going into our community and just talking to people at the parks, stopping and just basically improving the relationships between our community and law enforcement. He would be the deputy who would be running the program. He has been running it for several years in Hawaiian Gardens. And if you have any questions regarding the program, he's here to answer those questions. So I'm very happy to be introducing this program. I'm really excited about it. Just being at a park dedicated to address issues and concerns of our youth, that would be awesome. And this year, we continue to have our sergeant, our SAO sergeant. And as part of the budget this year, we're going to have a station lieutenant for the entire fiscal year. Last year, we introduced it mid-year. This year, obviously, we're introducing it the entire fiscal year. Okay. It might be user error here. Okay, as continuing with our sworn division, we do have contracts within this division. We continue to have an agreement with the Los Angeles District Attorney's Office for a deputy district attorney. And I believe all of you guys have met her, Kelly Tatman. We are seeing a very small increase of $300 for that contract. We started about three years ago sharing the total cost for this position or this agreement with the city of Bellflower. for this position or this agreement with the city of Bellflower. Our share is 50%, and that would be $142,300. Um, in addition, we continue to have our detective specialist who assists. He's non-sworn, he's our consultant. And he is a retired detective who assists the detectives aside to our station. And he's also now providing some of the crime analyzing that we do. At the bottom, you could see the total sworn budget of $9,450,000. Okay, moving on to our non-sworn division. And our non-sworn division, this is where we budget for community service officers, as well as our part-time PSAs are the ones who are in charge of answering the phones at the front desk. And our CSOs augment the services that we provide to our residents in terms of taking, uh, non-workable reports and parking enforcement. This year, the major change that we're proposing is to buy radios, both... Well, the Sheriff's Department changed a lot of their radios, so in order for us to continue frequency, using their frequency, we have to make this change. And we're also proposing portable radios, so that would be a backup. They would carry it on their person should they leave their car, but they also have a radio in the car. And that's all for security purposes. Okay. We also have the agreement for the crossing guard services in the non-sworned division. Uh, in the current fiscal year, we did not use any of these funds, because the kids were not attending school. So, this is something that's going to be part of our next fiscal year. And we are seeing an increase of 9.15 for fiscal year '22. Uh, this will cover 12,645 hours of crossing guard services at 21 designated sites. Two sites do have two crossing guards, that would be Downey and Rosecrans and Paramount and Rosecrans. Those are our busiest intersections, so we have two dedicated crossing guards there. Moving on to code enforcement. As part of the code enforcement division, we have one senior code enforcement and three code enforcement officers. Uh, one of those positions was frozen, and in fiscal year '22, it's going to be unfrozen. We are also proposing to buy LAS, I'm sorry, LASD portable radios for our code enforcement officers. And I'm sorry, I forgot to put the dollar sign there, so it's $14,000 to make that purchase for the portable radios. Once again, we think this is for security measures. We believe that our code enforcement officers are out there, uh, and sometimes they do encounter residents that are very upset, and they should have direct access to law enforcement. And our last division is support services. Uh, support services includes the agreement for SIACA. And this year, we are seeing a slight increase of 5.24, uh, which the total contract would be 266,000. Uh, $7,700 for administrative costs, and then onsite licensing at $10,000. Our total support services budget is $557,250. And that is the entire, uh, public safety budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from council members?
I have one question and one comment, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Um, the dedicated officer, which park did you say is that?
It would be, we're proposing Spanney Park.
Spanney Park. And it was Deputy Frida?
Fareda.
Fareda.
I'm saying that correct, right?
Yes. And I was just wondering if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, she said we could ask questions.
Yes, I have some too.
I was wondering if you could tell us how that's going.
You had my question.
Hello? Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, the program, it's, uh, scheduled to start off after the weekend of, uh, 4th of July. Um, currently, we're still in Hawaiian Gardens, but we're making the transition over to the city of Paramount. Um, at this time, I'd like to just thank all of you for the opportunity of bringing the program over to the city of Paramount. I think it's gonna be a great program for the city. It's been a great thing for Hawaiian Gardens. I've been doing it for the last eight years over there. I've been here at Lakewood Station since 2006. I did most of my patrol time here in the city of Paramount. So, I'm looking forward to giving back to the community in a different way. You know, trying to bridge that gap between law enforcement and the citizens of Paramount. I think it's huge, especially nowadays.
Super important. And I'm curious, just to piggyback on Councilmember Lems, isn't Spain Park was chosen as the first park? Or you're gonna rotate it to other parks?
No, we're proposing that it would be a permanent site, just because of the facilities and amenities that are there.
Okay.
Uh, they have a large room for homework assignment, um, certain excursions. And it's not just limited to the residents in that area. The program does provide transportation. So, should we have a, a, um, party that's interested that does not have any transportation and lives on the other side of town, then they could arrange it with Deputy Fareda.
Okay, so there's more to the program, I think, than I'm missing then. So, it's called Youth Activities League. So, it's basic, so is it a program that, that gives the children opportunity to come and...
So, so the Youth Activities League is, um, is an after-school program for at-risk youth.
Okay.
That provides homework assistance for, for the youth. Um, we do life skills. We bring in, um, guest speakers to talk about different topics. Um, I have three dedicated civilians through a grant that we're getting through probation that would help out with homework. And I also have an MMA instructor, um, jiu-jitsu coach that would provide also that program for the, for the youth. Um, there was actually some residents from Paramount that would go to Hawaiian Gardens for the last four years, five years, you know, and, and speaking of transportation, you know, even the surrounding cities in our reporting, uh, district, um, from Bellflower, Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, Paramount, they were, they would all be able to participate in the program. So, setting up, um, transportation for, for the youth in, in the general area or just outside wouldn't be an issue, just, we have the transportation to do it, and we just, we get it done.
No, great. Thank you for that description. Now, I understand. So, what, you said a youth, what are the age limitations or...
10 to 17. That's what we were kind of locked into, just because of the facility that I had in Hawaiian Gardens. I, I believe that we can possibly open it up 7 to 17. Um, 'cause that's normally what the other, uh, most of the other youth activities leagues that we have in the county are, they have them from 7 to 17, but they have, um, a bigger facility to separate kids. You know, I don't want a seven-year-old hanging out with a 14, 15-year-old, so.
Perfect. No, thank you. I like that. I'm excited.
Thank you.
Hold on, the Vice Mayor has a question.
Are, are these, um, students or children, are they recommended by the school sites? Or are they recommended by a different department?
The, the youth in the past have either heard of the program or, in, in one instance, there was a, uh, two brothers that were, that I got called by Alondra School. Um, and to this day, they're still part of the program. They, they live here in Paramount on, uh, 16600 Downey Avenue. Um, great kids, you know, the brother, one of the brothers, he actually became a deputy sheriff. You know, so he actually works Lakewood Station now. Um, so, um, it's, it's, you know, on a pretty much, you know, uh, one-on-one basis on how they show up at the program. You know, some parents, hey, you know, my, my kid needs help with this. Or if I go visit a high school and I'm talking to some of the counselors, hey, you know, we have this one kid that, you know, just doesn't seem to get it. You know, you think you could talk to him, invite him over to the program? You know, I don't force anybody to, to go, to come to the program, you know, if you wanna be there. Everybody, all the kids that have, that have gone to the program, they all get something different out of it. And that's my, that's my message to them, you know? Come, you know, check it out, and whatever positive, you know, you get out of it, whether it's just being here, feeling safe, because we want a safe, a safe place for the, for the kids at the end of the day. You know, during those peak hours when they get out of school. And instead of going home or running the streets while their parents are at work, working two jobs, you know, what, what better place than just to be there? At least, if you're, if you're not getting homework assistance, you're at least, you're hanging out, talking to your friends, you're talking with me. You're doing a sport, you're doing a arts and crafts, something, you know, playing a video game. But at least, you're somewhere where, at least, I'm, I'm keeping an eye on you, you know, and trying to keep you off those streets. That's our, one of our major goals, too, with the program.
Very good. Keep us posted. Love to hear how it turns out.
Um, normally, we, over in, uh, Hawaiian Gardens, at least every quarter or something, bring some kids in, speak about how the program has changed their lives or how it's going, just to give an update with the City Council.
Thank you.
For sure.
Definitely like that. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And then, uh, my other question, um, Adriana, the $286,000 for the crossing guard program.
Yes.
Does that cover completely the cost, or is that shared with the school district?
No, the city pays 100% of the contract or the agreement.
Okay, that's what I thought. I was asked that question, um, by someone actually, who's on a council in another city, 'cause they don't pay anything for theirs, and they were wondering if that was a shared cost. And I know we have many, many joint programs with the school district, joint facility agreements, joint programs like our, our PEP program, where, of course, we invest millions of dollars in education. And, um, it's really unique, this partnership that we have. And, um, I'm excited to see it continue. And, you know, I'm really hoping that, um, with all the new council members and all the new school board members, that we can continue to have an open dialogue, um, with a positive constructive communication between each other, because all of these programs have taken years to build, and we certainly want to build on them and continue to do great things for the entire community. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, next, we have Finance and Municipal Support's Budget. It is on page 55 of your budget document. Uh, the total budget for Finance and Municipal Support is about 4.6 million. About 2 million belongs to Municipal Support. Finance comprises of a few divisions, Administration, Customer Service, Water Billing, and lastly, Municipal Support. What does each division do? Um, for Administration, uh, we do the day-to-day functions, includes accounting, accounts payable, we cut checks, accounts receivables, we send bills, payroll, we process payroll internally, and we do cash management. We also take care of all the grants. In addition to the day-to-day, the department also handles the budgets, annual financial reporting, various state require, uh, reports, and, uh, different audits from the state, from federal government, from our, our own financial audit. Um, Customer Service handles business license, animal license, your cells, water billing, and payments that, um, that pay towards all these functions. In the next fiscal year, we're proposing some new software, some new equipment. Um, for business license, we are proposing a new software where applications, uh, with this new piece of software, applications can be turned in online, as well as, um, online payment options will come available. In payroll, um, as you know, we do that internally. We are proposing a software that allows us to do time card entry and approval process remotely. We also plan to centralize our purchasing and integrate that function with accounts payable. And finally, water billings, handheld devices, um, the, the guys that go out and check your water consumption. So, the handheld devices are outdated, so we are budgeting appropriation for new devices. In our personnel side, uh, we have a new addition in the department, which is a new senior accountant position. That does not change the total personnel we have in a city that maintains 90 full-time employees. This is a frozen position. We are un-freezing it, um, to make it into a senior accountant position um, to help with the demands that we have in the department. In addition to routines that we do, um, the department also handles different audits. Uh, one of which is the most, the most time-consuming one is the independent audits that we do with our, um, annual financial reports. Um, also, in addition to that, uh, four years in a row now, we have been engaging in a voluntary audit called Agree Upon Procedure. This is not required by law. Um, we voluntarily engage our auditors to look into our policies and procedures to further strengthen our internal control, and we've done it really well in this past few years. Lastly, over three decades, uh, the city has been a recipient of the National GFOA, um, Government Finance Officers Association's Award for Excellent Financial Reporting. We do not take this lightly. We will certainly hope to continue this tradition going forward. Lastly, for Municipal Support, it includes all the centralized services that supports the entire city. That includes supplies, equipments, printing, insurances, telephones, utilities, and IT technologies and software. One of the biggest expenditures in this division is insurance for general liability. Fiscal year '22's appropriation is about $530,000. That's the highlights for Finance. I'll be happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll pass it down to Andrew to talk about Administration Services. Do you have any questions? All right, Andrew, you're up.
All right. Karina and I decided before the meeting to place our items right after Community Services and Public Safety to break up all of the excitement, you know? So, we didn't wanna give too much. So, we'll move through this pretty quickly here. So, um, the Administrative Services Budget starts on page 47 of your budget book. Um, with the Administrative Services Budget proposed, or recommended, to say, for FY22 being $1.8 million. The Administrative Services Department coordinates the internal day-to-day operations of the city and provides specialized staff support to all of the departments in different ways. Uh, Administrative Services consists of two divisions, which oversee various programs. Uh, Human Resources handles risk management, uh, personnel, and labor relations with our only, uh, unit of represented members in the Public Works Department. Our Management Services Division oversees economic development. Um, although IT is budgeted, um, for, you know, the devices and stuff in Karina's budget, which she just went over, uh, we actually oversee all of the administration of the IT devices citywide. We also do contract management and legislative analysis. So, um, this year, uh, the Consumer Price Index, uh, increased 1%. This is the metric provided by the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics. Uh, so the 1% increase was from, uh, was calculated to be from February 2020 through February 2021. Um, and as you may know, CPI generally indicates the cost of living for, you know, the entire nation. So, what, as such, we are recommending a 3% cost of living increase for all employees in FY22 to be adopted this evening. Um, that said, you'll notice some notes, um, just to the sides of those. So, for full-time employees, we are also recommending a 2% reduction in the CalPERS employer paid member contribution. Uh, setting, uh, this would set the employee CalPERS contribution at 4%. Uh, this change to the CalPERS contract, as John mentioned a moment ago, uh, aligns with our prudent pension reform efforts. Um, but for now, uh, we remove the EPMC item. Uh, we do intend to return it, uh, at a future council meeting. Uh, the cost of living increase for full-time employees was calculated as a condition of an adjustment to the EPMC or this CalPERS contract adjustment. So, consequentially, although we will appropriate funding in the FY22 for a cost of living adjustment for full-time employees, implementation of the salary increases will be delayed to a date to be determined uh, after an adjustment to the EPMC is made. So, that date is to be determined, um, as well as the proposed, uh, 2% reduction of CalPERS EPMC. Uh, that is a proposal which is currently pending. However, as for part-time employees, um, and the caveat is excluding star, uh, part-time employees, um, because they are, uh, subject to the California Grant, uh, dollars that they operate under. Um, all part-time positions will also, um, we are proposing and recommending a 3% cost of living adjustment, which would take effect July 3rd, um, because they are not, uh, subject to the EPMC, um, CalPERS contract uh, issues, uh, as the full-time employees. Um, also, in our Human Resources Budget is a comprehensive minimum wage study for all part-time positions, and this is just to bring us in our last phase of compliance for the minimum wage law that, uh, the final phase will, uh, take effect this January 1st, 2022. Um, and then, uh, in FY21, this fiscal year, we're just wrapping up. Uh, we did do a comprehensive compensation study for all positions. Um, from that, uh, as we indicated to you at the last, at the previous meeting, uh, two positions are being adjusted. adjusted, are recommended, be adjusted to align with the market, plus their two respective supervisors so that we can address the compaction issue, which I believe I mentioned at the last meeting. Continuing on with human resources in the FY22 budget, we will, our labor negotiations with the city's only represented employees union is still ongoing. We are expected to be completed hopefully in this year. The single-handedly, the delay seems to be just the COVID pandemic and all of the delays that came with that and being unable to meet. We also do have a budget for legal services, for labor negotiations, and personnel consultation services, as well as the purchase of an HR information management system, which we will be implementing over the next year. As I mentioned, we also do handle all of the city's network and information technology devices. This week, actually, we will be finishing up our phone system upgrades with the actual devices being installed this Friday into the weekend. So as you can imagine, over the next year, we'll be, you know, implementing and rolling out our new phone system. Coupled with that upgrade was a fiber upgrade to all of our city facilities. This is a huge project that was many years, seems to be many years in the planning and finally came to fruition this past year. So we're going to get to enjoy all of that high-speed internet and which will certainly positively impact our community and of course, the city employees. For the first time in our budget's history, we are putting in light items for cybersecurity protection. As you can imagine, this is just this day and age, something that is absolutely needed. Although a small amount, we are committed to ensuring that, you know, we don't fall victim to ransomware attacks as we know other cities have been. And of course, just ongoing replacement of critical devices that reached their end of life. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the administrative services budget before I pass it over to Planning Director John Carver.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew?
Just a comment. I found that absolutely scintillating. What you were worried about.
All right, planning, you're up. You got to beat that one.
You're going to love this presentation. Okay, so. So the planning budget starts on page 67, and we have a total budget of $3.6 million. Okay, so budget highlights for the planning department in fiscal year 2022 include, excuse me, include maintaining the current level of services that we currently have in the planning division and the building and safety division. We will continue the home improvement program and the commercial rehabilitation program. We will be working on two new specific plans and we will add air monitoring to the planning department duties. We will start work on the Clearwater East specific plan amendment. This will have a cost of $400,000 with $240,000 coming from an SB1 grant. We are excited about this plan amendment as it will take into consideration the light rail stop at Paramount Rose Crowns. We will also begin work on design guidelines for the downtown. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you take me back? One forward. Okay, so I'm sorry. I apologize. So looking at current planning, we will review 150 conditional use permits, 150 projects during the fiscal year. We will process 30 conditional use permits, and we will be working on the assisted living facility at Paramount Boulevard and 70th Street. The applicant for this project should be submitting plans within the next several weeks. Also, in current planning, next slide. I'm sorry, back one slide. Also, in current planning, there is a proposed assisted living facility at the Methodist Church location on Paramount Boulevard. We also anticipate a project at the Paramount Pocket Park location north of Madison Street. And finally, construction will begin on the World Energy Conversion Project in the new fiscal year. Looking at long-range planning, as mentioned earlier, we will be working on several specific plans, including the completion of the North Paramount Boulevard specific plan. And again, we will begin work on the Clearwater East specific plan and the downtown design guidelines. Looking at the building and safety division, so far this fiscal year, we have done plan check on 265 sets of plans. We have processed over 1,000 permits and have made a little bit more than 7,600 inspections. We will continue our commercial rehabilitation program, which is funded with federal CDBG money. Construction on the Lee Building on Paramount Boulevard has just begun, and that will be completed in fiscal year 22. That property is just south of Domino's Pizza. Next slide. Other commercial rehabs in FY22 will include the Five Star Market on Downey and a car wash on Alontra Boulevard. We will continue the home improvement program in FY22. We have four projects that are budgeted, and these are funded with federal home funds. Next slide. And a new program that we're proposing is a program to remodel mobile homes, and this program would operate similar to the home improvement program, and we have budgeted for four projects. And that concludes my presentation. Next slide. Turn it over to Public Works.
Any questions? All right, Adriana.
They always leave me last.
I know, Adriana.
But I'm not complaining. All right, so our Public Works Department totals a little over $19 million, and you can find this budget on page 117 of your budget document. All right, before I jump into the proposed budget, I just wanted to share with you the various divisions within our Public Works Department. We have our Administration Division, which handles all of administrative functions of the department, as well as our sustainability programs, such as Tree City USA and Beacon Award Submittals, among others, and of course, our solid waste and recycling activities, which by the way, will be ramping up this coming year with new state regulations particularly related to the state's organics mandate. Next, we have our Engineering Division, which is performed through contract services. This includes general civil engineering, as well as traffic engineering services, and federal and state technical reporting, whether it's for grant-related projects or technical reports required by the feds or state agencies. Also, under this division, we have contract services for our stormwater compliance section, as well as our regional participation in the watershed management groups through the Gateway Water Management Authority, which handles all stormwater monitoring activities required by the municipal stormwater permit, or also known as the MS4. Which reminds me, a new stormwater permit is coming out this year and will include additional requirements for cities, so more to come on that. Another division within Public Works is our field operations for our water utility with over 7,300 service connections to water wells, one currently in operation, which is well 15, and the construction of our brand-new well, which is well 16, anticipated to finish construction this fall. Once construction is finished at the well site, we'll begin the process of permitting to bring the well into operation, and that's anticipated for this coming spring. Moving on to our Landscape Division, this is the division that provides maintenance for all of our landscape areas, including our parks, parklets or mini-parks, all setback areas, green ivy walls, et cetera. This is done both through contract services and in-house staffing. This is also where we manage the contract with the city's arborist to maintain all 8,000-plus trees citywide. Our facility maintenance crews maintain all our city facilities, and when needed, we bring in specialized services to assist. This is also the division that manages the contract for janitorial services for all city facilities. And last but not least, is our Road Maintenance Division that handles all activities related to our city streets, whether it's signage, striping, curb and gutter, ADA accessibility for sidewalks, et cetera. We do all this with both in-house personnel and through contract services when needed. Another section that I didn't mention or I didn't list here is that of vehicle maintenance, and we contract for that service that allows for maintenance of not only our vehicle fleet, but also equipment needs such as generators or any type of large tools. So getting into the budget itself, the proposed department operational budget is similar to this current year, at a little over $19 million. Our Administration Division is around 2.2 million, and as indicated, the administration provides overall management and support for all divisions within the department, in addition to our sustainability efforts and solid waste and recycling activities. Our proposed budget includes a part-time administrative intern that will assist with these programs, particularly the impending rollout of the mandated organics program. There will be a lot that is required from municipal agencies in terms of record-keeping and public outreach, so we will be using a combination of contract services, our partnership with CalMed, and this Public Works intern that will assist us with this task. In terms of our Facility Maintenance Division, the proposed budget includes 1.9 million for the operations of that division, which will include general maintenance services for all city facilities, that is approximately 130,000 square feet of building space. This also includes funding for graffiti removal services and again, janitorial services. Something that is new for this upcoming year is a municipal vehicle lease program operated through enterprise. A couple of years ago, some cities in the area began to look at ways to minimize their fleet maintenance costs over time, and now more and more cities are utilizing this program, which has proven to be quite effective. This is a municipal vehicle lease program that allows us to convert our entire fleet over a multiple-year period that in turn brings down the cost of maintenance. Overtime, maintenance over time. We will be bringing an overview of this program at a future meeting, but we have included funding in this proposed fiscal year 22 budget to allow us to kickstart the program. And in case you're wondering, this lease program also includes cleaner energy vehicles such as hybrid or electric options. Also, in this budget, we have included the purchase of two additional message boards, which are heavily utilized for events or citywide messaging, as was the case for COVID-19 public messaging campaign. Also, new this year is the installation of water bottle filling stations at various city facilities utilizing state grant funds. As a city, we have made significant improvements over the years when it comes to our greenscape, and that was recognized with our Tree City USA designation now three years in a row. Our proposed budget includes 2.3 million for our Landscape Division, which covers maintenance of our landscape area at citywide by both in-house personnel as well as contract services. Our trees are on a three-year trimming cycle, which allows us to get to every one of those 8,000-plus trees within a three-year period. This budget also includes funding for specialized tree trimming services that are needed from time to time. In terms of our Road Maintenance Division, the proposed budget includes approximately $2.2 million. Funding for operations remains consistent with previous year's allocations for both in-house personnel and contract services that allows us to maintain the city's 72 miles of street and alleyways. Last year, we included some funding from Measure W Funds, stormwater funding, for the purchase of a street sweeper unit and also to retrofit some of our catch basins with trash capturing inserts. But given the delay from the county in getting us the city's first allocation of Measure W Funds, this project is being moved to fiscal year 22, and additional Measure W Funds were also needed to complete the project. Also, something new this upcoming year is additional part-time hours for a dedicated public work staff that would concentrate effort on litter abatement from our major streets in hotspot locations. This is a needed enhancement to the city's litter abatement efforts. Also, something new this upcoming year is the purchase of road barricade devices. That's an image that I put there. Hopefully you can see that. It's kind of small. These barricades are similar to the ones used in Pasadena for the Tournament of Roses Parade. They are security devices that are strategically placed at road closures where a high level of pedestrian activity is held. The devices are designed to stop vehicles and actually cause major damage to those vehicles that attempt to enter any of these pedestrian pathways. We're currently using these, or our proposal is to use these for our Friday Night Market events where the street is fully closed to allow for this activity, as well as tree lighting event and Heritage Festival events. In terms of our Engineering Division, funding for next year is around $677,000, and it includes approximately $255,000 in general civil engineering and traffic engineering services that are contracted through WellDan. We have included some funding for traffic engineering in anticipation of our citywide parking committee restarting and the need to have this type of technical support. Our Engineering Division also includes stormwater-related activities, such as our industrial waste permits and inspection services related to the municipal stormwater mandates. In terms of our Water Operations Budget, our water system is broken down into three sections, water production, water distribution, and water customer service. We provide drinking water to approximately 98% of the city. Now, in terms of our water production, that budget has significantly increased, given the high cost of importer water. That is due to a couple of reasons. One has been the decommissioning of Waterwell 13, which was part of the construction project for Waterwell 16. But the most significant reason for this cost increase is the voluntary shutdown of well 14. As you may recall, we voluntarily shut down well 14 when small levels of PFOS were detected in that water well last year. Our water distribution and water customer service budgets for next year are consistent with previous years. Our water distribution section includes approximately $2.1 million of funding that is needed to maintain our water system. That covers maintenance and repairs, as well as equipment that is needed for the system itself. Our water customer service section includes our meter-reading personnel and equipment that is required for the performance of those tasks. And that concludes the operations side of Public Works, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor, would this be the appropriate time to ask you about a median? Or is that in another portion of the?
Medians we handle through the capital improvement program.
Okay.
Okay. Should I jump into the next?
Oh, yeah. We're ready. I'm sorry.
Any more questions about Public Works?
Nope.
All right.
All right. I was waiting. I was like.
All right, so I'll get it started. The CIP budget can be found on page 139 of your budget document, and as Karina indicated, I will be doing, I will be switching with David to present the CIP. David has a significant amount of projects under parks, and so he will be going over those. All right, as you can see, there are quite a bit of projects lined up in this fiscal year 22 CIP budget. Given the uncertainty of the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to delay many projects last year, and what this means is that this upcoming year will be a challenging one, but in a good way. We'll be able to see more projects coming online. So we should note that the fiscal year 22 proposed budget does include some carryover funding for the larger projects. So here's a chart comparing various capital project categories from this current fiscal year to the proposed fiscal year 22. As you can see, there is a significant increase in street projects and park projects, and there's a new category called sustainability, which will allow us to bring to fruition projects that align with our climate action plan and our overall sustainability efforts. Also, there is a slight increase in miscellaneous projects that are mainly due to deferred maintenance, given again, the pandemic, but projects that are necessary for the upkeep of our facilities and operations. In terms of our water CIP, we're entering the final phase of the new water well project, well 16, and that is reflected in the CIP budget. All in all, the vast majority of the funding for our CIP projects are restricted funding, including the new Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars and funding from our CIP general fund reserves. CIP general fund reserves. So as you can see, we have quite a bit of projects on our street section, although we have some carryover from fiscal year twenty-one that contributes to this overall number, I will be highlighting the new projects proposed for fiscal year twenty-two, which I'll go into more detail in the following slides. So for our arterial street resurfacing project, you may recall, we did Downey Avenue south of Alondra to the southern city limits this year, this fiscal year twenty-one. The proposed fiscal year twenty-two CIP budget includes Downey Avenue north of Alondra to Somerset, and as has been our practice, whenever any type of street projects are done, whether it's arterial or neighborhood streets, we also look at other items such as curb and gutters and ADA accessibility, street signage, et cetera, and we include that as part of the project as well. Next, we have our neighborhood streets resurfacing project. In fact, on the agenda tonight is the award of contract for fiscal year twenty-one Neighborhood Streets project, which includes Pearl and Howe west of Paramount Boulevard and the small section of Colorado south of Rose Street. Our fiscal year twenty-two project will include the sections you see on the screen, which are Arthur, Loretto, McClure, Denver, and Rose. Moving on, this is, this is exciting, actually. Also on the agenda tonight is the award of contract for our bus shelter project. We had included some funding in this current fiscal year twenty-one CIP budget for this project, which will need to be carried over to fiscal year twenty-two. As you can see from these images, the proposed, the proposed project will bring the mid-century modern look from our downtown area to the rest of the city where existing bus shelters are located. This is primarily our major boulevards, so this new look will certainly improve the aesthetics in these areas. We'll be using Prop eight funds, primarily Prop eight funds for this project, and I'll be going into it a bit more, into a little bit more detail when we do the award of contract item is presented after this budget. Okay, last year, we had to put many of our projects on hold, again, given the uncertainty of the pandemic. This upcoming year, we're proposing to continue our efforts in beautifying our city's greenscape by continuing with our drought-tolerant conversions for our medians. The fiscal year twenty-two CIP budget includes drought-tolerant conversions for Somerset Boulevard from city limits to city limits. We see this project as an opportunity to highlight our green image to those entering our city. In terms of the city entry monument signs, these are of course located at the main entrance to the city and define the city's identity. As you know, Paramount Boulevard was the first major street to receive these monument signs. The ones on Alondra were done in fiscal year nineteen, and the ones on Rosecrans were done in fiscal year twenty prior to the pandemic. The proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget includes new city entry monument signs for Somerset Boulevard. The original monument sign that was placed on Paramount Boulevard, which is in the southern city limits, was the smaller version, the original version than the one that we placed on Rosecrans and Alondra, including even the replacement sign that was later placed on Paramount Boulevard in the northern city limits. So if approved, we're going to be moving the existing sign from Paramount Boulevard, which is in the southern city limits, to the Somerset Boulevard, and we will be purchasing the larger monument sign to fill in that spot on Paramount Boulevard, and of course, another monument sign for the other entrance on Somerset. I hope I didn't confuse you too much. All right, last year, we submitted grant applications to the state under what is called the HSIP or Highway Safety Improvement Program. This is a statewide funding mechanism for traffic safety improvements that meet specific criteria. We submitted the traffic signal installation on Alondra in Passage as that one qualified under the program, and we submitted various traffic safety improvements citywide that included pedestrian crosswalk features such as the rapid flashing beacons and ADA curb ramps. I am happy to say that we were successful in getting a little over half a million dollars for these improvements, which again include those, the traffic signal on Alondra in Passage. However, as it is the case with many state grant funding, particularly the HSIP program, this is a very long process, so it is likely that the project will need to be carryover as funding may not come in in time, but we're going to keep our fingers crossed. In terms of the traffic signal on Garfield and Seventieth Street, we were successful in getting preliminary approvals from the city of Long Beach as we share this intersection, and they have committed half of the cost. So we have included funding in this upcoming fiscal year to complete the project. Again, this is dependent on Long Beach time to process all of the required agreements.
Adriana, can you stop this? I just want to make it clear to the council, the traffic signal on the left is the one in front of Stater Brothers, right on Alondra. As Adriana mentioned, it's very well likely that that project will be pushed into fiscal year twenty-two-three. It may not get done this current fiscal year. We're trying our best to push the state of California for the grant, but they're extremely slow. On the other hand, the other traffic signal that we have planned is at Garfield and Seventieth, right in front of Weber Metals and the Mobile Home Park there, I think it's the Golden State Mobile Home Park. That's on a faster track. That may get built and installed this current, this upcoming fiscal year twenty-two, and the reason for that is because half of it is being paid by the city of Long Beach. So we want to grab that opportunity before Long Beach backs out, so to speak. So I know that there was a lot of push to get the Alondra and Passage one done, but I just want to make it clear with the council that that one could be delayed and the other one could be installed before that.
And the good thing about both of these is that design, the design for these were, has already been done. So we've already designed both projects, so they're ready to go. As soon as the funding comes in, we're there, we're just really waiting for that agreement with the state to make it happen. So now I'll turn it over to David Johnson, who will handle the park projects.
Here, Adriana.
Oh, sorry, any questions? I'm so sorry.
Before you go on to that, median projects, I'm, I think it's in another city or shared with or whatever, but what about Lakewood, Lakewood Boulevard by Walmart?
Lakewood Boulevard is actually within the city of Bellflower.
Yeah, but I remember at one point, I think when we built it, like, you know, you can build it, but then you have to maintain it.
We do, and we pay for the maintenance of that meeting.
That's what I thought, so like.
Yeah, so it is dirt, it's not, yeah, it's grass.
And it's like at one of our main shopping centers, so why aren't we moving?
Yeah, the city of Bellflower actually has a project for Lakewood Boulevard, a street project, improvement project. I'm not sure if it's coming up this fiscal year or if it's next fiscal year, but the idea was to put that median project in with their project. So we can definitely contact Bellflower and see where they are with that.
Yeah, see where, how it overlaps with ours and, you know, are they going to tear out those medians or are they just going to landscape it or whatever? Because I guess it's one by one of our biggest shopping centers and it just really looks.
Yeah, it's a lot of dirt, it's too much dirt. It's nice because there's a lot of trees on there, and I don't know if we could get any more drought-tolerant landscaping in there with that. I mean, the only thing that really could go there was grass, but we would definitely look at some other type of ground cover that could just offset the dirt for sure. So we'll get an estimate from Bellflower to see where they are with that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, any other questions to that section of what I just went through?
All right, Mayor and council members, in terms of our park projects, I was happy, excuse me, I was happy to see that park projects are getting a bigger slice of the pie. So again, that's again thanks to Measure Y. What you see here is a variety of park projects that are, affect multiple parks across the city. We'll go in detail on the next slides on each of these. So at Paramount Park, we have long needed a signature playground, this is our signature park. We don't have that big expansive playground anymore, so we, we are planning to put a large playground system to serve our community at that park, so I'm very excited. It's taken many years to get to this point, so I'm happy to see this. The picnic shelters have gone, there've gone a lot of improvements from our Public Works Department to improve the wood structure part of it. So now we're going to look at the, they're stucco columns, and they do take a lot of abuse, so we're going to wrap them in stone so they can take, hopefully they'll show less abuse, and so it'll be one more aesthetic and actually survive better. It's going to look really good. Our community center needs a little touch-up here, so we're going to be, we did the roof a few years back, we did not paint the fascia, so we're going to paint the trim of the building, and actually, we've never had rain gutters. So if you've ever come to that building and it's raining, there's a lot of water coming down off that roof line, that will be now captured by these gutters and sent away from people walking into the entry spaces. Continuing at Paramount Park, it's been probably about ten years before we've repainted the gym and pool, so those are in need of a repaint, so you'll see both facilities, the roof, fascia, and walls be repainted on the exterior. The gym improvements below, so again, this is a very old facility, it's been around forever, it has not seen significant improvements to its infrastructure, though we do have, we've had improvements in the past to the air conditioning system and continue to improve that. The gym is actually, so we have, I think the original wood bleachers, those will finally get replaced with a more modern system or safe system. The wood floor, it actually is in good shape, it's just very dated. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at for the gym, so this will be a multi-year project, but we'll start at improving the, the look and safety of our bleachers and actually improving the look of the floor for a more modern lighter wood look. So it's going to get stripped down to the bare wood, which hasn't probably been done in thirty years, get rid of that kind of yellow look that it has, that's an old style, and lighten it up and make it a more bright airy environment. Then the ball field lighting, so, and again, Measure Y is really helpful because, you know, it's helping with a lot of these projects, but we also have the opportunity with the American Recovery Plan to provide possible funding for projects. So we're not sure if that plan's going to be able to fund these projects, so we are still putting them in the budget with the hopes that they will be eligible. Ball field lighting, so across the spectrum of all our ball fields that we have on city and district properties, we are still old school. We have to actually physically go out there and turn these lights on and off. A lot of cities have converted to systems where you can control it from your cellphone, you can control it from your computer. So if I get a phone call, says, hey, the lights aren't on at Progress Park, I get on my phone, click a button, and boom, the lights are on. We don't have that ability now. When I brought an agent out from Musco to take a look at all our lighting systems, it actually, he was shocked how antiquated our systems are. So this ball field lighting, if, once we make these improvements, will be new LED lighting systems, they're much smaller, they're more energy efficient, there'll be light saving, there'll be savings in utilities, and actually provides a much better ball field lighting display of light with less overbleed out into the neighborhood. It's very directed and it's very efficient. So if that's able to happen, we'll be, that'll be our first park that will be converted over to a new system, and that'll be amazing. At Progress Park, to your left, we have the Zoccolo in the middle of the plaza. This is going to get an enhancement. We're going to remove a lot of that landscaping, improve it, but importantly, in the middle there, we're actually going to install an art piece. So again, our effort to continue to beautify our spaces with cultural things and art is ongoing, and you'll see that at Progress Plaza, and then we'll find a way to actually light that space up. So again, as you enter this space, again, we want to make this space attractive, we want this space to become usable, so as we add lighting to the space, it'll become much more usable and more attractive. On the right, in terms of the exterior design, we have money in there to just, to hire a consultant to design ways to help us improve access to our outdoor spaces. So the, the front part where you see that wood structure to the auditorium, now that is a usable space and it does get used for events, but we also, and we, we added lighting to that lawn area to your left on the west side of the building, but there is area of grass there that has opportunities where we could, with, with the work with a consultant, develop ideas to draw people from, we want to connect the indoor to the outdoor part of our buildings. So when you have an indoor event, we also want you outdoors. We saw this obviously during COVID, that this is important to be able to use our outdoor spaces. So we, we want to add like a seating area there, possibly a fire pit, you know, whatever the designer can come up with to be able to draw more people out from the building and make those connected spaces our indoor and exterior spaces so they get, become more usable. The, off the boardroom, the conference room on the east side of the building, we've had this outdoor space forever, it really does not get used. So part of this design work would be to, again, find a way to make that space usable that would connect it to the boardroom, so when you have an event in the boardroom, you also have access to that outdoor space to make it a much more interesting use of that building. This park also, it has that beautiful ash tree in the front, it is one of our highly sought rentable spaces for a picnic, but the, the park does need more places that we can designate as a picnic space because we do have a lot of people that do want to picnic. So we're going to install a type of picnic shelter, it's not necessarily that one that you see to the left, but similar of that nature, it's prefabbed. And you see that blue kind of oval there, that's informally known as the Joe's Grove at Progress Park. We would be looking at putting that structure there so that could be a designated picnic spot at Progress Park. At Dills Park, again, this is another amazing opportunity that we have, that north field, which will be just north of the mini-pitch, which was just recently constructed, so we created a soccer space for our kids, our adults on that facility of that park, and now we have the opportunity to connect the walking trail that already runs through Dills Park and connect it all the way to Rosecrans and to the Rio Puente Mobile Home Park. But around that walking trail, you will have, we have the opportunity to construct probably the first of its kind in our area, a community orchard in the city. So this orchard would be a fenced space where we would work with our local community to bring volunteers out to help us plant those trees, to grow those trees, to care for those trees, and eventually harvest those trees to the benefit of the neighbors in that community. As part of this project also is the restroom. If you're aware, Dills Park is a very long park. There is a bathroom that was constructed years ago when we renovated that park, it's on the south end of the park. On the north end of the park, there really is not accessible bathroom space. We do have a maintenance building there though, near that area, not just a little bit south of the mini-pitch. Because of that location, we're able to more easily construct a potential bathroom as part of that building, so this project would include finally constructing a bathroom on the north side of Dills Park. And we do have a grant request out there with, under Prop sixty-eight with the state as part of that grant application that also included the restroom. If in fact we do get that Prop sixty-eight grant, then that grant would then pay for the restroom. At various parks, so we have multiple basketball courts, and again, part of this is, you know, where this requires a lot of maintenance to keep these in good shape, so all the basketball courts throughout the city will receive a cosmetic improvement to, we'll repaint the surfaces and the lines, they'll receive new backboards and rims. At Village Park and Progress Park, we have two restrooms, they do need some maintenance and upgrades, so they'll be receiving upgrades to their, they'll get some paint inside, new flooring, new fixtures, so the walls, the toilets, the sinks, the faucet, all will be upgraded. At our snack shacks, there are three snack shacks in the city, there's one at Paramount Park, one at Progress Park, and one on Alondra. Couple of years back, we took the direction that we're going to make those, those facilities permissible through the LA County Health Department. Because of the lack of maintenance over the years, we, deferred maintenance, we have unfortunately have to do a lot of work in those buildings to get them to that point where they are permissible through LA County Health. So at all three facilities, we'll be, again, doing painting, we'll be doing flooring repairs and upgrades, and then obviously there's a lot of stuff that has to change to our cabinetry to make sure that they're permissible, so all that will happen through some of our public work staff involvement and a contractor, so those will finally be upgraded to the point we can get them permitted. And then our community garden, so as part of the action that the council took was to, over a two-year period, at our Orange Cortland Garden, we need to, we have twenty-eight plots, we're going to break that out into fifty-six plots, so what we need to do is be able to clearly identify those plots. So beginning in January of twenty-twenty-two, that will be the first year where we take some of those garden plots, they won't be able to have two plots, they'll have one, and then the following year, they'll all break out, so eventually we'll have fifty-six plots. To help us in that regards, we need to clearly identify those garden plots, so our Public Works team will put in wood barriers to clearly identify those, those, those properties, those plots, and add in more rocks to, in the pathways, the common pathways that people have to move around. So that'll be a nice improvement to our community gardens, and it's going to help us. So that'll be a nice improvement to our community gardens and it's gonna help us when we actually start breaking those out. And then lastly, for our parks, Salud Park Walking Track. So this track was installed about 10 years ago and that is the general life of a walking track or whoever's walking track. And again, it's really, it is a highly used facility, but it's not being misused. That's not why the track needs to be replaced. We are getting a lot of water seepage from our landscape areas that are adjacent to the walking track. So you see in the far right, you see that lip of rubber coming up. That's coming from water seepage. So as part of this project, the contractor will be looking at ways to minimize or eliminate that. And so we do anticipate that the track, the new track that will go in will probably last longer than 10 years. But again, as you know, this is a highly used park, so this will be a welcome improvement. The areas where it's damaged is not affecting the use of the track. Again, you see it generally along the edges. So it continues to operate fine. But again, we want it to be as best as we can have it, so that will be replaced in this year's budget. And that ends the part, part of the slides, so I'm gonna hand it back to Adriana.
Thank you, David. All right, we'll go into the miscellaneous projects and that amounts to almost $1 million. And I'll go into these in the following slides. So as we all know, roofs are expensive. And so we try to extend the life of our roofs as much as possible, but we need to do this. The roof on top of the warehouse, which is the image that you see on the screen, was actually done in 2014. In fact, when the roof was done, solar panels were also installed in that section of the building. The building next to it, to the north, is the, you know, administrative offices for both community services and public works. That is the roof that has not been done in quite some time and it is in desperate need of re-roof. Also, the roof for the building east of this location, where our water operations are also, is also in need of re-roof and are included as part of this project. Both the community center and the Paramount Gym are classified as emergency shelters should an emergency occur. And a couple of years ago, we included the installation of a transfer switch at the community center. That would allow us to connect a portable generator to power that facility in the event of an electrical outage. What we are including in this upcoming fiscal year 22 budget is the installation of a similar transfer switch for the Paramount Gym. And the purchase of two backup generators that would be used under emergency conditions. However, our plan is to use the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding for this. And we are currently confirming that this would be an eligible expense under those guidelines. As is the case with many grants, we would only be proceeding with the project if the project is grant eligible. Also, annually, we include the use of property funding to switch to our newer style of trash cans throughout the city. And increase the number of trash cans located on our major boulevards as part of our Pick It Up Paramount litter abatement campaign. The goal is to allow our residents the comfort and convenience of having trash cans strategically positioned. So that they can easily dispose of their items properly as they are on their walks. The CIP budget also includes funding for the retrofit of restroom fixtures at the Clearwater Second Level Conference Room. Under normal, non-pandemic conditions, this room is heavily utilized for meetings and conferences. And of course, we take pride in the aesthetics and overall image of the city. We have four restrooms at this facility that don't quite match. We believe the fixtures could be renovated to modernize that look and maintain consistency in the design. Our Civic Center Fountain Project. This fountain you see on the top right-hand side of your screen, is really the focal point in our Civic Center area. As you can see, there are two water fountains. The other, the other one, which is on the top left side of the screen, is located closer to the hospital. Our original plan was to simply replace some of the tile that had either come off altogether or was badly damaged, that needed to be removed. However, we had been experiencing more mechanical issues with both of these fountains that includes leaks. And so these leaks have been repaired time and time again, but the repairs have become more and more challenging. So the upgrades to the fountains are no longer just aesthetics, but also mechanical in nature. With that in mind, we have had to take a step back and reevaluate what was needed. And as we were going through the process of the conceptual design, we realized that the Civic Center Monument sign was also being redone. To a more mid-century modern look, again, similar to our downtown area. So if the fountains needed to be repaired or redone, we needed to carry that same look throughout. So the lower images reflect this new look for the water fountains utilizing a different material that would last longer than the smaller tiles that have been so difficult to maintain. And really also to replace. We plan on using basically colored concrete that will match our new Civic Center Monument sign. And although the concept image for the main water fountain does not include this, we plan to keep the koi fish in that front fountain. And continue to include the water plants that you currently see on that top image. So we're very excited to now have included a sustainability section to our CIP budget. And we have included 200, oh, sorry, it says 347, I have 200. I guess we'll look, in this upcoming year to get this started. And I should mention that for the projects that will be utilizing general fund, we will certainly seek any potential grant funding opportunity before general fund monies are spent. Also, some projects do include the ARPA funding, the American Recovery, no, American, oh gosh, what does it stand for? Rescue Plan Act funding. And so we will need to confirm that the project is ARPA funding eligible before any funding is spent. So the first is two additional EV charging stations. And as you may have noticed, the two existing charging stations at both Clearwater and the substation are heavily utilized. This is a great thing as these are either near zero or zero emission vehicles traveling through our city. Contributing to a cleaner paramount with less greenhouse gases to emit into the atmosphere. So although the proposed budget specifies two locations, those two locations are still to be determined. So earlier in the presentation, I talked about our roofing needs at the yard. We have also identified a potential location for additional solar power panel installations. And as you can see, we have existing solar panels above the warehouse building. And we believe there is potential to expand that to the administrative offices, which are depicted in that red square. However, in order to do that, we'll need to structurally retrofit that roof so that it is capable of supporting the additional weight from the future solar panels. We have included funding in this upcoming fiscal year to do exactly that. So we're also seeking partnerships with nonprofit organizations like Great Alternatives for potential funding options when it comes to the solar panels themselves. But we need to have our roofs strong enough to support that weight. And of course, we'd like to do that before we do our roofing project. So LED lighting retrofit project at Paramount Park and City Hall. Over the years, we have been switching to LED lighting as it is much brighter. But the best part of it is that it provides significant energy savings. So as light bulbs go out, we have been replacing them with LED fixtures. Now, it's not always that easy. In some cases, it's not just the light bulb that is changed out, it's the entire fixtures that need to be retrofitted. So this project includes the retrofit of interior and exterior lighting at Paramount Park and the interior lighting at City Hall. There is however, again, a caveat to this. This is another designated ARPA expenditure, so American, oh my gosh.
American Rescue Plan.
Rescue Plan. Thank you, Karina, it's Team Effort. So we need to make this, we need to make sure that the, this is an eligible expense before we proceed with the project. And this is another ARPA funding project I'm not even gonna attempt. That we'll need to, again, verify eligibility before we proceed as well. But this is the replacement of the condensing unit for the HVAC system at the Paramount Gym. And this is a very, very old unit that needs to be replaced. It has been already repaired several times, so it's in need of changing. And in terms of our CIP projects for water, we have carried over funding for our Waterwell 16 project, which is anticipated to be completed this fall. And additionally, every year, we include funding for annual installation of services and hydrants and valve replacement needs throughout. And that concludes my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
American Rescue Plan.
American Rescue Plan, thank you. You know, everyone's gonna bug me with this tomorrow, you know. The ARPA girl.
Councilor, do we have any questions for Adriana? Comments? No, thank you.
We do have the public comment, Madam Mayor.
Yes, we have actually first. Are we all done with the presentations?
We're not, we're going back to Karina for the water utility and to wrap it up and then we'll go to the public.
Okay, thank you. I don't have exciting projects to present, but I, bear with me, we're almost done. We just have some more financials to show you. So final portion of the presentation is financials on water utility. The total budget is, Adriana, kind of covered that, is $11 million. That includes the final phase of the Waterwell 16 construction, also includes P-FAS treatment at our wells. And also debt service payments related to water well constructions. I want to talk about a little bit of our water rates. As you know, traditionally, our water rates have always been one of the lowest in the entire region when we compare to 14 other agencies. Look at where we are, we're in the bottom of the charts. For average single-family residential household, they use about 20 units in average. Their monthly bill is about $51.71 as compared to as high as $177.44 in other agencies in the region. This is a monthly bill. So we take pride of our rates and we always try to maintain as low as possible. However, this next chart want to show you that our rates will not be able to sustain much longer. In the current year and next year's budgets, because we voluntarily shut down one of our wells, we ended up not able to pump as much water. We have to purchase more water. As you know, purchasing water is a lot more expensive than we produce on our own. So based on the current situation of we continue the way we operate, we are looking at a deficit of $3 million. Currently, we have a reserve of $2 million that may bring down to the reserve to negative $1 million. If indeed that happens, I can tell you general fund will loan the money to water fund to keep us afloat for now. But we are presenting a water rate study to you at the next meeting and we'll look at how we can deal with our deficit here. A few more slides to talk about some highlights in the current year and next year's budgets. This, the first item here, the payroll is as part of the budget and you have seen in the total budget here. We want to bring it to your attention because this is an unusual item. We run on a bi-weekly payroll. Every 10 years or so, you'll see additional payroll, 27th pay period. This happened here in the current fiscal year. It costs about $578,000. We just want to bring it to your attention. It happens every 10 years and this happened to be in the current year. And the next few items here are the items that we now added to the budget since we presented the budget to you two weeks ago. These are the information that we just received, for example, from Siaka. They now tell us they're not able to perform a canvas, so it's a saving. But we also have additional expenditures like the sheriff's contract and other items, and some of them are grant funded. Ultimately, the surplus didn't change too much for the current year, it's still $649,000 approximately the same as what we presented. But we did add some items in here we want to bring to your attention. So this is for the current year. Next year, we also added these items since we presented the budget to you. If you recall, Mayor, almost you asked us to add some membership to the city council's budget, so we did. We added $600 to it. There were other things we added to it. Andrew mentioned about a minimum wage study for part-time employees. There were other items that we added. Overall, with all this added, didn't change the budget that much. We still a break-even budget for next fiscal year. So we talk about, we have a surplus for current year, $649,000. With that, I want to let the council know that we continue to be able to add to our reserves. The next slide, I'm gonna show you the balance. So we added $500,000 to the equipment replacement fund. We added also $500,000 to our purse reserve and also $500,000 to our capital improvement project reserve. Also, we carry over some projects to next year. Now, next year's budget, we are breaking even and we're proposing a break-even budget. These are all the reserves that we have in addition to the general fund unassigned reserve balance. First one is a capital reserve funding. As you know, after we added $500,000, we will have $3 million. This reserve comes very handy. We use it a lot in our capital reserve, our capital improvement projects. You may know about neighborhood improvements, different projects. If general funds not enough to cover, the capital reserve will come in handy. We also have used capital reserve and even in our downtown projects in the past. Purse reserve, we added $500,000 to it. We also made $500,000 to pay, to make additional payment to Cow Purse. So we remain at $2 million of funding in this reserve. I'm recommending along with the pension obligation bonds, we will set up a trust fund using this $2 million. What it does is we're gonna invest in a fund that will earn interest for us. If and when in the future that will incur more unfunded liability for pension, we can use this fund to pay it off. Or this fund will help smooth out if in the future we have unfunded liability that will increase the funding for us, we can use this fund to pay for it. Lastly, is the equipment replacement fund. 20 years ago, our pension was actually super funded. At that time, we didn't have unfunded liability to pay. And so we realized that's a savings in our operating budget. So we take that advantage of that and we actually set up our equipment replacement fund. Over the years, we have add to it, we have used it, it depends on our budget situation. For next, for this fiscal year, at the end of the year, we anticipating we still have $1.58 million. This is a history of our surpluses and you can see over the year, we really do really well. Even in the worst times, we always try to balance our budget. And in balance, general fund will end with about $13 million. And we strict the funds as a drop from $16 million is because it's a timing difference. We use previous years' funding for projects that will be used in the next year. So it's really not a deficit, but a timing difference. Water fund is a real deficit. We're looking at ending from balance of a negative $1 million. We talk about this a lot. We always run on a really conservative platform when it comes to our finances. We spend within our means, we don't go overboard. Currently, we have reserved about $13 million. I'm happy with this number, but every year, as you know, as we do closing, we try to add to the general fund unassigned balance to it. The way we do it is we try to keep up with the Consumer Price Index and try to add to it. And my recommendation is to keep it at $13 million or about 35% of our expenditures budget. The Sesa Agency, we are winding down the affairs of the former We Devenement Agency. The budget here includes the funding for the annual recognized obligation payment schedule. It includes all the bond payments and other third-party contracts. So we have enough revenues to cover everything in this schedule. Housing Authority, that's a holdover of our former We Devenement Agency's lower moderate income fund. In next fiscal year, we're budgeting a senior housing project for about $300,000. With that, that wraps up the budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. We also have a few resolutions for you to adopt tonight and all of us will be happy to answer any questions.
So thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the department heads for all your work on putting this budget together. I just wanted to say, I personally just feel that you guys put into mind, you guys keep in mind the residents and the community at heart. So I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for doing that. So at this time, I think we have a comment?
Can I ask one question before we move to public comments, Mayor?
You sure can.
My question is regarding the deficit in the water fund.
Yes.
When will we be dealing with that?
We are gonna be dealing with that in this upcoming fiscal year. Likely at the next city council meeting, we will present to you the water rate study. Our plan is to propose to the city council that water rates possibly increase January 1. It's a process that we want to take. So that might help to impact, if the council approves the rate increase, that might help to impact that $1 million deficit a little bit. Waterwell 16, if it does happen to come onboard and start pumping within the fiscal year, that could see additional savings. Because that could offset the purchase of the water that we have to make now. The third thing is if there is in fact still a deficit. The third thing is, if there is in fact still a deficit, the plan is possibly to have the General Fund Reserve, that you saw we have a balance of thirteen million, lend a portion of that to the Water Fund, and the Water Fund will have to pay it back over time with interest. So, there are plans in place to deal with the deficit. I don't like to see a deficit whatsoever, I'm with you, it's very uncomfortable, but it's just the position we're in right now, having not raised rates in a number of years, our revenue is not keeping up with our expenditures.
And along that same line, the reason, of course, I know that we need to deal with it as soon as possible, but the funding for any infrastructure problems or improvements, does that all come from that same fund? And if so, was it coming from the surplus, and now there's nothing?
Correct. Yeah, that's, any infrastructure improvements we make definitely comes from the Water Fund.
Or even repairs.
Exactly. That all comes from there, absolutely.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so Minister Villapone is gonna get the caller, or the public commenter on the line?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. De León.
Yes?
Hi, we're calling regarding your request for public comment for item number seven, fiscal year 2022 budget. You're being broadcast live to the council, and your three minutes will begin now.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, the reason that I'm calling is because in the last city council meeting, I heard the city council members discussing about an allocation of a hundred thousand dollars for the air monitors. Um, my question is, why do we have to pay for those things? For those, why do we have to pay that amount, and why do we have to pay for those items? We are not the ones who are polluting. Why you guys don't make those companies to pay those a hundred thousand dollars? Why us? We are not making the damage, and we still have the problem, and they are responsible, they have to pay for, no us. Uh, and I hope they, you guys take a note, I just saw that it's like ninety-eight thousand dollars to AQMD, but I'm not too sure if, if it's the amount that it's already decimated on the budget. I just saw on page three, on page three. But, I keep asking, why do we have to pay for? Why those companies, they don't pay for? They are the ones who are polluting, no us. We are already paying a lot of taxes, why do we have to pay those a hundred thousand dollars? That's my biggest question. And I hope that after I spoke about pollution, they took the time to discuss about fire, fireworks, because this is something that we have to lead. It's not about, oh, Southgate, Downey, they do the same thing, no. We can do something different, we can be leader, no follower. And I'm sorry, Quer, but you saying that my grandkids, they love doing that, we're gonna teach them something that is more positive for the planet. I respect traditions, but they are traditions that we have to keep changing, because we are killing the planet. Those companies here, they are killing us.
Mr. De León, you have twenty seconds left.
And also, they are building weapons to kill people around the world. So, take in consideration, and I hope, I'm gonna send an email requesting that information. By the way, I've been asking for information, and I never got that information. The city is failing to provide us public information.
Mr. De León, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, if I may, Mayor, do you want to comment?
Go ahead.
I believe, because we have actually explored this question regarding the business community paying for contributing to monitoring, and there is at least a partial answer to this question, would you like to go over that?
Sure, or, yeah, you want to jump into as well, so since we've had it discussed.
No, just in the fact that, you know, when a question's asked, and we have an immediate answer.
Sure.
I just think that, because I know that it came up from somebody else in the community, and you explained that situation, so I just thought, you know, we could simply answer that question.
Absolutely, be happy to, be happy to. The difficulty with charging any single business for an environmental mitigation fee is there has to be a direct correlation to what you are charging them for. In this case, the AQMD did do extensive monitoring, and they found two businesses in town, I'm sorry, three, that were polluting the air with hexavalent chromium, and as a result, they did find these businesses for that purpose, and they did extensive monitoring to bring their levels down. As a result, it is our understanding by the AQMD's perspective that these businesses are no longer polluting. So, the hexavalent chromium that could be in the air, could be, there may not be a source that we can pinpoint to where that is coming from. It could be coming from, you know, Business A or Business B, or it could be coming from other sources like concrete cutting, they found. It could be coming from other sources like diesel. There's evidence that the AQMD presented to us that showed that diesel pollution does have hexavalent chromium in it. So, there's a number of possible sources that could be contributing to hexavalent chromium levels in our air. So, to pinpoint it on one particular business or a handful of businesses, it'd be difficult for them, for us to force a payment on them. That's one of the obstacles that we have. The other obstacle is whether or not that legally, if we can charge for that environmental type of regulation, by state law, AQMD is definitely the one that is responsible for enforcement of air quality regulations. Are we stepping more into a boundary that we don't belong in? That's a legal hurdle that me and Mr. Kavanaugh have discussed in the past. It may not be our jurisdiction, and Mr. Kavanaugh can cover that a little bit more on that. So, is that kind of what you were hearing?
Well, and so, what I'm hearing, the short answer is, the city is exploring every possible option that's out there, including placing this expense upon the businesses, but we are under legal limitations at this point at every avenue that we've explored.
Yes, I'll add to that, Councilmember Lemmons, what John was saying regarding any type of mitigation measure, state law actually requires that you have to show that whatever mitigation measure through costs to any particular entity, whether it's a business or not, you have to have what is known as a nexus or a causal relationship. If you do not have that causal relationship, then it becomes a tax, and therefore, then it becomes illegal to charge a business a cost of which you can't show that there's that nexus they're producing. So, as John was saying, even though there are some businesses that were causing some of this hexachromium, to force that upon all businesses after that was mitigation already, you would have to show that they're continuing to do that, and then you have to show that each one of them has an apportionment of contributing to that. So, it's a very long but legal formula that the courts have imposed upon cities before they can have these mitigation costs. And basically, based on the information that John and I were talking about, we just could not find that to substantiate it.
So, it sounds like a real easy fix, just tax the businesses, but there's a legal limitation to what we are allowed to do. So, in other words, you can't always have everything you want, you have to stay within the ramification of the laws that are currently in place.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I'm on page two, I'm trying to figure out where that comment was about the AQMD on page two, I don't see it, so maybe we could take a look at that later to see where that's coming from. And also, John, I know you're gonna be giving an update on what's going on with air monitoring during your comment time. All right, thank you. So, with that said, I think we're gonna move into the resolution.
Madam Mayor, with that, I would move Resolution B, number twenty-one zero one seven.
I second it.
All right, so we have a motion by Lemmons and a second by Aguayo. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to Resolution C, can I get a motion, please?
Move number twenty-one zero one eight.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Lemon, second by Quer Stallings, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, final one is Resolution Number D.
Move Resolution twenty-one zero one nine.
Second.
I have a motion by Lemon, second by Aguayo, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, final one is Resolution Number D.
Move Resolution twenty-one zero one nine.
Second.
I have a motion by Lemon, second by Aguayo, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is award a contract for neighborhood street improvements on various city streets.
Yes, Madam Mayor, items eight, nine, and ten are directly related to the budget, there was extensive discussion about these items. Staff is prepared to give you a presentation, however, I can just summarize each one, and we can seek the council's approval on those if that's your pleasure. What would you like?
That is a pleasure, you can give us the summary.
Okay, great. Award of Contract for the Neighborhood Street Improvements, this is for our annual neighborhood street paving project. You saw in the budget presentation by Ms. Figueroa, the streets that we are gonna pay, these are the smaller residential streets, this year we're gonna do repave eight of them throughout the city, and it's valued at one-point-three-million dollars. And so, we are requesting your approval of the Award of Contract to, it would be All-American Asphalt, in the amount of one-point-three-four-eight-million dollars.
Okay, if there's no questions on this, can we go ahead and get a motion to move this item, please?
So, move, second.
So, we have a motion by Quer Stallings and a second by Lemmons, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Item number nine, Madam Mayor, this is the item for the replacement and renovation of our bus shelter. When we rebid the downtown in 2016, we actually came up with a new design for our bus shelter. This newer look is mid-century modern, and has a more updated look. Before ye today is the award of contract to replace the rest of our bus shelters throughout the city. There's, there are several different locations throughout town that these will be put into, and the value of the contract is one-point-two-four-eight-million dollars, and that is being recommended to be awarded to CS Legacy Construction, Inc. And we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Lemon, second by Aguayo, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
And lastly, item number ten, these are agreements that we do every year, as Ms. Lopez presented in her public safety presentation, there are three contracts up for approval as we do on annual basis. The first one is for all city management services, for school crossing guard services, the second is for detective bureau consultants, consultation services, and the last one is with LA County DA's office for our strategy against gang environment program.
Great, there are no questions for this item, I will go ahead and entertain a motion, please.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Quer Stallings, second by Aguayo, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quer Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. Thank you, John, for those summaries.
You're welcome.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number eleven, which is the oral report to update us on the summer special events and county health guidelines.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is an update on our summer events and how we plan to conduct them with our new health order in place, and here's Mr. David Johnson to handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John, Mayor, and council members. So, thankfully, with the new county and state orders, and with the fact that we have an increasing vaccine rate, things have changed different from the point in which I spoke to you last, in which we were able to present these events, there were going to be a lot of restrictions, so I kind of want to walk you through that, how that has changed. You'll see, if you went to the last Friday Night Market, you saw that we had a controlled entry and exit point, we were planning to do that for our summer concerts, that is no longer required. So, when you go to the next Friday Night Market, when you go to the next concert, or concerts as they come up, you will not have those restrictions, you will not have temperature testing, you won't have controlled access and entry and exit. Social distancing has also been dropped, we were at our summer concerts, going to have to place designated markers for people to be in a no more than three-family group, three-household group, six feet apart from the next grouping, that has now been dropped. Masking, though, does still exist in some aspects, we will have to post at all our events that if you have the vaccine, you are not required to wear a mask. If you're only partially vaccinated or not vaccinated at all, it is requested that you continue to wear the mask, but it will be generally on the honor system. So, that signage will be placed throughout our parks, I'm sorry, throughout our areas where we have special events, we'll have those at our facilities as well. We're gonna retain the sanitization stations, I think that is always a good idea regardless of COVID, so those will always be retained at city event sites. Food vendors were going to be very restricted if they were being able to operate at all, so we're now to the point where the food vendors can sell their food, and you don't have to take your food immediately to your little household seating area, you can actually now eat in a common space. So, we wanted to walk you through the events that we have coming up this summer, obviously the concerts, Friday Night Markets, the Heritage Event, and two, well, there's one Hatri cultural event that occurs in the summer, then one in the fall. So, again, because of the new state rules and county rules, we're able to function these, function with these events pretty much as we did prior to COVID. Our summer concerts will be at two sites, as they traditionally have been for the last few years, they'll be at Progress Park, but now we moved two concerts to the Friday Night Market, so the very first summer concert we have will be July 2nd at the Friday Night Market. So, Thursdays, they'll be at the park, and then obviously Friday at the market. They all go from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the main band will start at 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., but we do have that time between 6:00 and 6:30, please come on out, because that's when we'll be doing raffles and things of that nature. So, again, they run from July 2nd through August 13th, we'll have food, we have a number of different types of bands playing, and these are our wonderful events that we have that build our community and bind them together. So, there's the band lineup, and we're just gonna throw this really quickly, and we'll go into each band really quickly, but I did want to point out, again, the Heritage Event, because that occurs on Saturday, August 7th, the normal Friday Night Market would be August 6th, the first Friday of the month, we did push that to the second Friday of the month, so we don't have those two back-to-back. So, our first, at the Friday Night Market, our first summer concerts, July 2nd, at, we have Rock, we have the cover band for Fleetwood Mac, so if Steve can play that. Actually, I think that's a really good cover band, they kind of even look, at least a couple of those figures look like that.
Very close.
This band Hollywood Stones, we actually had two years ago at the Heritage Festival in the downtown, so they'll be at Progress Park, and again, it's rock and roll, and Steve, play it. Then we go, and actually, we're gonna have two bands that are kind of reflective of our city council, they are all female.
Oh, yeah.
But we have a Banda, and we have a mariachi band that's all female, so I expect the council to get up and sing along. So, this will be Thursday, also at Progress Park, it's Banda Los Angelinas, Steve, play it. So, that band actually did, has played at past Friday Night Markets. The next band is not all female, but it's Grupo Nublina, they played at our Tree Lighting Event, crowd loved them, so we're gonna bring them back and do some cumbia for us.
weren't they the virtual concert as well?
What's that?
Didn't they do the virtual concert, the city? They, didn't they do the virtual concert at the city?
Uh...
Did a virtual concert at Clearwater?
Yeah.
Was that the same?
That was them, yeah.
Okay.
That was them.
It didn't work out, so I don't remember it very well.
[laughing]
I, I excise it from my memory.
[laughing]
Uh, La School Libre, uh, again, here's our other female band. Uh, it's mariachi, uh, also at Progress Park. Steve? And we finish on August 13th, back at the Friday Night Market with Echo Park, which is Latin jazz. Thank you, Steve. Uh, we have our Heritage Festival this year. Uh, again, we, we get a, go back in the downtown, close down the Boulevard from Alondra to Harrison. Uh, we'll have our barnyard animals back. So if you wanna milk a cow, you wanna learn more about cows and our history, uh, in terms of the dairy industry, we have that. Uh, and we obviously, uh, have our, uh, Petunia the Cow that you can take pictures with. She'll be back. Uh, we do have two bands performing. Crown City Bombers, which is a rockabilly-type band. And then we finish off with the Selena Tribute Band. Yes, we got Selena? Yes. I see excitement on the mayor's part.
[mimicking a band's voice] Speaking of bands, David, um, I actually know that we've talked about this before, because I have to admit, it's my favorite kind of music. But I actually did get a couple of calls through this year asking that we start to include it in our events, which is Motown soul music.
Yes, I got a phone call about that as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Not just me, although it's my music.
Well, we, for the summer concerts, we actually took the lineup we had last year that got canceled, uh, so we're bringing that in. We are looking at our budget to see, uh, we would, if we can, um, and I think it's a strong possibility we can, we're looking for a Motown band that will be introduced, uh, at a Friday Night Market somewhere in here as well.
Yeah, but I'm talking about including it in the big event, like the Heritage Festival. You know, we have all of these bands, and there's nothing in that genre, so... Because if you've gotten calls, you know that they're interested, and I've gotten calls, so... I know I bugged you for years, and, and we had it one time, and, um, I'm always the one that's on that. But when I started getting calls, I thought, oh, good, it's not just me, so I, I will push it again.
No, it is not just you. Uh, and again, at this event, we do have, uh, we'll have a separate teen center and, uh, for teen activities, as well as a separate teen, or a kid zone for our little ones. And that is it. If I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions and let you know that, yes, we'll have Motown next year.
Looks like a lot of fun.
Absolutely. And it's kinda nice that you're doing two concerts on Fridays. You mixed it up a little bit. I think that's gonna be, that's a good idea.
Hope so, yeah.
All right. So with that, you're, no questions for Dave? No, we're, okay. Oral report done. So we're gonna move on to the environmental sustainability, um, portion of our agenda. Under New Business, we have an oral report regarding the review of STAR After-School Program Earth Day Activities.
Yes, indeed, we do. Uh, we had to celebrate Earth Day this year a little differently due to COVID. Uh, we did this through our STAR program. And this is a fun little presentation that you're about to see. Our, our management analysts in the Community Services Department is Rebecca Borquez. We'll provide for you a review of the Earth Day activities that were held as part of the STAR program. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thanks, John. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As John mentioned, I'm here tonight to review the STAR After-School Program Earth Day Activities. So, this past school year really gave us the opportunity to be more creative, to find engaging and enriching activities for the students to participate in. As April approached and the realization that we weren't gonna have an in-person eco-friendly fair became real, uh, we turned to STAR to help reinforce messaging about picking up trash and keeping our city clean. Our STAR assistants researched and scoured the internet to develop lesson plans. Um, they provided instructions and supplies to each site. We simply asked the coordinators to do one activity each day with the kids to engage them in the outside environment. Um, and the five activities were Nature Names, Love Nature Bird Feeters, My Earth Day Promise, Cleanup Scavenger Hunt, and the ABC Nature Walk. And here are some photos. So here you have Nature Names. Um, students were given a bag and gloves. They went outside their, uh, on the schoolyard campus, and they were given a few minutes just to pick up what they could find, um, such as twigs, leaves, stems, flowers. Uh, they then went back into the classroom and outlined their names and used the supplies to spell out their names. Here we have Love Nature Bird Feeters. Uh, students were given a handful of plain Cheerios and a pipe cleaner. Uh, they threaded the Cheerios through the pipe cleaners, um, created a heart, and then attached a ribbon to it. They then took these bird feeders outside and placed them on tree branches and bushes to help make them accessible for the birds. Um, and then to ensure that no trash was left behind, they did go back a week later to pick up the empty bird feeders. Here you have My Earth Day Promise. Um, students were asked to come up with a promise that they wanted to protect the earth. They then shared this promise with their classmates to kind of he, help keep each other accountable. And I really just wanted to share Sofia's promise. She said she wanted to pick up trash and save electricity by playing on her iPad less. Here you have the Cleanup Scavenger Hunt. Um, in the classroom, our STAR leaders went over the three Rs, recycle, reduce, and reuse. Um, they then reminded the students that this activity was only happening because there was trash to pick up around the schoolyard. So they just wanted to remind the students that had someone just simply made sure the trash made it into the trash can or done their part to clean up after themselves, this activity wouldn't be actually happening. But to make it fun and engaging and competitive, each student was given gloves, a bag, and a list of supplies of things that, oh, sorry. A list of items they should try to pick up to get points for. Some of those items were straws, milk juice box, um, wrappers, things like that. So the student that was able to find most of the items and got the most points received a small prize. And here we have the ABC Nature Walk. So the students were given gloves and a bag and a piece of paper that had each letter of the alphabet on it. The students were taken outside, um, and asked to find something in nature that started with each letter of the alphabet. The students struggled to find items that started with an X and a Y and a Z, but nonetheless, it allowed them the opportunity to be engaged and present in nature. After the week concluded, we asked our coordinators and, um, STAR leaders what they felt and how the students liked it. Um, it was unanimous hit. So with that, moving forward, we will be having, um, this activity, uh, STAR Earth Day Week each year at our STAR program. And lastly, we wanted to introduce you to Pick It Up PD. Um, you may have seen PD at our Christmas Drive-Thru Event. Most recently, PD was at the Tree Giveaway this past weekend. Um, we're super excited to have PD at all our special events moving forward. Um, so unfortunately, PD does not talk, but that doesn't stop PD from loving to give out stickers, shirts with PD's face on it, uh, high-fiving adults and kids that really wanna help keep the city clean. And with that, concludes my report.
Good job. Is there any questions for Rebecca?
No, just, wow, congratulations. Great job, and, you know, nothing drives it home like interaction, so... Wonderful.
Very creative, you guys. Good job, Parks and Rec. Thank you, Rebecca. All right. So we are done with that. We'll move on to actually now our comments, um, from council members. We will start with, um, Vice Mayor?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. With Mayor Olmos, I was able to attend the Tree, uh, Fruit Tree Giveaway. We gave out almost 200 trees, and I wanna thank the staff and youth commissioners, Brian and Mario from the Tree, uh, Tree People for helping us and assisting our, our, um, residents. And, and they were asking questions about planting their plants, and they were so eager to help and, uh, answer questions. And also, PD was there. And then, um, uh, I listened today to the Zoom meeting, 'cause I wasn't able to get access from my house, uh, for the meeting, uh, regarding the Housing, uh, Environmental Meeting? Yes, workshop. And I, um, was, uh, it was very interesting. Um, the young man, uh, that was, ran the meeting. He said that, um, during the Spanish session, there was only a handful of people, but I also noticed in the English one, um, there was only a handful of people also participating. But there were some good questions and good, um, participation. I, I was gonna ask you, um, John, if it was possible, are we gonna have a tong, a town hall meeting regarding this in the near future?
For the, the Housing Department, we're, we're wrapping that up. Uh, so we will have a hearing before the Planning Commission, a public hearing, and then a hearing before the city council. So we'll have two more public, well, two more opportunities for the public to talk about.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we could have, uh, maybe an, a raffle. Maybe we could have some businesses donate a few things, and maybe we'll have more participation.
We did, uh, you know, we were at the Friday Night Market, um...
Yes, you were.
In June. We, um, actually, our survey, our survey statistics went up from 50 to 90.
Oh, wow.
From the Friday Night Market. So we got 40 people to reply to that survey. So, I think we did pretty good with that.
Oh, that's great. And then, um, I had a couple other things. But anyway, um, I was, uh, wanted to comment about the fireworks. Uh, I know there's concerns out there, but also, we're just trying to help, you know, our organizations and our churches, and, and we're trying to work all together. And, um, you know, um, we have in the best interests of everyone, you know, being safe. There are some exceptions that people do, uh, let out illegal fireworks. And I, it's my birthday. It's the Fourth of July, and my dad was very proud of me being born on the Fourth of July, and we used to chewed out fireworks. But legal fireworks, never illegal fireworks. But, um, hopefully, uh, our residents, our adults will take the responsibility, um, to know that it's in the best interest of their children and their family to use safe and sound, um, fireworks. And, and that's all I have to say. Anyway, everybody have a safe Fourth of July, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will move it over to, uh, Councilmember Aguayo.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Olmos. Um, so, um, I actually was on, um, you know, my, uh, vector control meeting. I always think of, you know, uh, Tom Hanson with that. But it is Mosquito, um, National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. So, um, the, actually, Greater Los Angeles Vector Control website has a lot of really good tips and information, some really just fun things on there. Go figure. Never thought I'd say that, but yeah. Um, and then, um, you know, I actually was on both calls for the environmental, um, just, there are actually both workshops. And yeah, the Spanish, um, they're really, um, say, I mean, I, I was hoping there would be, you know, a larger turnout, and fortunately, that wasn't. But, um, we worked with what we had and the people present. Um, and sometimes, you know, smaller groups, sometimes you can get more of a, of a dialogue and conversation. So I think that, um, it worked. We made it work, John, and John that's not here, um, made it work. And as far as the, the English one, um, I was on that as well. And, uh, there was, there was a total of eight residents on that. Um, and again, you always hope there's more to get more input. But again, um, the, the conversations, the, the questions and concerns and suggestions, I thought they were really, really good. It wasn't, they were sincere things that we can, I think we can work with. Um, you know, instead of maybe having hundreds and hundreds of suggestions. I mean, it kinda narrowed it down. Um, so, but, you know, on the flip side of that, it would be great to, to, to have other people participate. So I don't know, maybe we do need to come up with some way to, to get the residents on there. I had somebody tell me, I, well, for them, they're like, oh, I, I just, I forgot, I missed it. I planned on being there, and you know, that happens. But it, it was really, really good. So, um, looking forward to the next opportunities for residents to, to be on those type of workshops. Um, the other thing, um, I mean, two, all the, you know, the department directors and all their stuff, wow, you know, um, it takes a lot to do what you guys do. And, you know, I know I've made calls to a couple people and said, you know, I told you guys, thank you for what you do. And every one of you usually says, "It's my staff. It's the people that work with us." So, um, really, you know, thank you for everything you guys do, um, for, you know, our residents. Now, um, that's it. Have a blessed night.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have, um...
No one left but me.
No, I'm after you, so go ahead. No, I'm after you. So go ahead. Councilmember Lemmons?
I'm actually really excited to report that at my last Selico meeting, the board voted to put on a job fair, and it's going to include all of the Selico member cities. So it should be quite a large one. Selico also reported that for the first time in a very, very long time, they can't even remember in the recent director's history, where instead of people calling them looking for jobs, which is generally what they do, they are flooded with calls from employers who need employees. So it should be a really, really good job fair. And I'm even more excited that they chose the location of Paramount. So they're working with our Chamber of Commerce, and all of the member cities are going to join in to promote it across the entire region, and we're going to have a great big job fair in Paramount.
I love that. That's great news. Does that complete your comments?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I'm done.
Oh, you're done. Okay. I just have two general comments, and this is more, I think, for the residents. I think, you know, Councilmember Agüayo said it very nicely in a sense of like, you know, how do we engage our community? That's always been the big question, I think, on a lot of things. You know, staff takes the time to put these meetings together and gives the opportunity for the residents to engage. Give us your comments. Give us your, you know, your thoughts of how we can improve things and make things better, make things better in our city. So, you know, I'm reaching out to the residents, you know, take the opportunity to engage with us, you know, us as your city council, that, you know, we look to you to help us with the process. So like I said, we got to figure that out, even maybe on our staff. What do we do to help engage? And maybe that's going to be our new word. How do we engage our community? And lastly, for the residents as well, you know, I think I said this comment back in January, that, you know, the city council's up here to support, to listen, and to work together. So at any time that you feel that you hear something that you're just not clear about, or you need to know about, please reach out to us. You know, if we don't have the answer, we will get staff on it to get you the answer. But I know sometimes there's a lot of misleading information out there, and we just want to make sure that you have the facts. So please, again, reach out to us. You can email us. You can call City Hall for us. You have our personal cell phone numbers. Please reach out, and we're here again to help you. How about you, John?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment from staff, and that's air monitoring. You mentioned that earlier when we had a caller bring that up. We proposed to the AQMD that they come back and perform interim air monitoring until we can get the city's air monitoring program up and running. AQMD agreed. They will be coming back July the 15th to start conducting air monitoring for two months as an interim program. We are pretty confident we can get our program up and running once those two months have expired. So July 15th through September 15th, AQMD will be here. We're hoping that we'll be very close to launching our program by September-ish. So that's coming down the pipe so far that. And that's, the interim air monitoring is at no cost to the city.
Thank you.
Can I just say on behalf of that, thank you, Mayor Olmos. I know that you were very involved in negotiating with the AQMD, who did want to charge us quite a large sum of money for monitoring and worked with our representative, Mr. Rex Richardson, and yourself, and John Moreno, and got that down to $0. So thank you.
Like Adriana says, it's T mark, right?
Yes.
With that said, okay, we will go ahead and adjourn our council meeting to July 6th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And we'll move on to our successor agency for Paramount Redevelopment Agency. Can I please get a roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Agüayo?
Here.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Quera Stallings?
Here.
Mayor Olmos?
Here. Do I need another motion for...
Motion to excuse?
Yes.
Councilmember Guian?
Second.
Motion by Lemon, second by Agüayo. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agüayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. All right. Do we have any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Right. Can I get an approval for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Lemon, second by Agüayo. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agüayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. And John, we've already done the new business resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So at this time, I go ahead and adjourn this meeting till...
We still need a motion.
We still need a motion?
We need a motion. We've heard the report already, but we still need a motion.
Okay, so I may read by title only and adopt resolution number SEPARA 21001.
All right. Motion by Lemon, second by Quera Stallings. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Agüayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Olmos?
Yes. And now I will adjourn to July 6th at 6:00 p.m.
Call to order the Paramount Housing Authority meeting. Call to order. Like to excuse Lori Gillen. May I have a motion? Roll call?
Councilmember Agüayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Does I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Regian, please?
Roll call, please.
I need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Agüayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quera Stallings?
Yes.
New business approval in minutes? I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Agüayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quera Stallings?
Yes.
New business resolution HA 121?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Agüayo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Olmos? Vice Chair Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Any comments from staff or commissioners?
No, ma'am.
This media is adjourned?
Great. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time.